All right, next we'll have roll call.
Make sure I'm on. Commissioner Jones? Commissioner O'Connor?
Present.
Commissioner Moody?
Present.
Commissioner Sassi? Commissioner Ruppert, Ms. Linnear?
Present.
Commissioner, Mayor Bliss?
Yes. Get a motion to excuse, uh, Commissioner Ruppert.
So move forward.
All right, City Clerk, you can call that.
Commissioner Linnear? Commissioner Linnear?
Yes, I'm sorry, yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Connor?
Yes.
Commissioner Moody?
Yes.
Commissioner Sassi? Oh boy, do we lose her? Commissioner Sassi?
Yes, sorry, I kind of fade out.
And Mayor Bliss?
Yes. All right, so next I would like to introduce, uh, our translator tonight, Ms. Lily, Lily Beth Press. But before I do, um, if you're watching and you want to call in for public comment, we have a number of opportunities for public comment tonight. The very first one that I'll open up momentarily will be on, um, items that we're actually voting on tonight. So these are agenda items that we talked about this morning that we'll be voting on. Uh, if it's not on the agenda, we're going to ask you to wait till the end of the meeting. We do have three scheduled public hearings tonight. We have one on, uh, reading improvement, uh, district. We have one on truck routes and one on downtown improvement district special assessment. So if you are calling about any of those, I'll give you instructions on how to do that. For those who want to speak to the phone tonight, ask that you call in and you can speak by calling 456.
Mayor, we're having difficulty, we're going to have to ask everybody to put their mics on mute. Thank you.
Thank you, City. Um, so if you want to call in, we're going to ask you to call 456-3000 or 311. Um, we'll ask you to hit one for public comment. Uh, and then for the five different opportunities for public comment, the first opportunity for public comment on specific agenda items, um, is number one. Uh, the, the public hearing on the rezoning proposal is number two. Uh, on the truck routes is three. And then the downtown improvement district is number four. And then the end of the meeting is number five. Uh, so with that, I'll introduce, uh, Lily Beth Press and if you, is Lily Beth with us?
Thank you, Mayor Bliss.
Thank you.
If you need interpretation services in order to address the city commission, I will be able to assist. Please dial 616-456-3000 and select the action you'd like to speak on. Si necesita servicio de interpretación para dirigirse a la comisión de la ciudad, estaré para ayudarle. Marque el 616, 456, 3000 y seleccione la opción en la cual desee hablar.
Thank you, Lily Beth. Um, so now I'll open up the first opportunity for public comment. Some of the rules that apply for all the public comment periods is that we ask that you share your name and that the city, and the city that you live in, and you'll be given up to three minutes to speak. For this first opportunity for public comment, we ask you to be clear about what action item or agenda item that you're referring to. Uh, and then just to, to make sure there's no confusion, this morning, we did have a special meeting at 10:00 AM where we voted on and, um, moved forward some Carter amendment language. That is not on the agenda tonight because that was a special meeting this morning. Uh, so that we finished that this morning and it's already finalized. Uh, so if you want to speak on that issue, we're going to ask you to hold off to the very end of the meeting for the last opportunity for public comment. So with that, I'll open it up for a public comment specifically on agenda items tonight. And I'll turn to our City Clerk's office to see if we have anyone in the queue.
We do have a few callers in the queue. Here comes the first caller. Good evening, caller, you're on with the city commission. Please state your name, the city in which you live, and the agenda item you'd wish to speak on. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Good evening, my name is Dennis Bennett from Grand Rapids. I'd like to address the police defunding issue. And I believe it's a common sentence.
But sir, sir, that's not on your agenda. So I'm going to ask you to call back and hit number five and, and you can speak on that during our last public comment period.
Is that clear?
Thank you.
Thank you, caller.
Thank you, Dennis.
Caller, you're on with the city commission. You have three minutes. Please state your name, the city in which you live. Can you please turn down the volume on your device?
Hi, this is Donna. From Grand Rapids, can?
I can, I can hear you. Go ahead, please state the, um, agenda item you wish to speak on and your time starts now.
Thank you. I'd like to speak on defunding the police.
Ma'am, that's not an agenda item that we're discussing at the moment. But if you call back and press number five, you can speak on that option at the end of the meeting.
Oh, all right.
Yep, this is for, um, agenda items that the city commission is voting on tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Caller, you're on with the city commission. Please state your name, the city in which you live, and the agenda item that you'd wish to speak on. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Okay, thank you very much. Good evening. Uh, my name is Becky, uh, and I am calling from Grand Rapids. And thank you for giving us, uh, this avenue to be able to call in and voice our, uh, opinion. Um, yes, I'm calling about the issue of, of, uh, defunding the, uh, the police.
Ma'am, ma'am.
Yes.
Yes, that's not an agenda item that the city commission is voting on tonight. So if you'd like to call back to 311 and select option five for general public comment, that's the correct time and place for that.
Oh, okay, well, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
But I'm against it.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, thank you so much. Bye-bye.
Caller, you're on with the city commission. Please state your name, the city in which you live, and the agenda item on the agenda that you'd wish to speak on. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
My name is Tim Coulter. I'm from Grand Rapids, Michigan, and I'd like to speak out against defunding the police.
Sir, this is not the correct time for public comment on that topic. This is for, um, agenda items that the city commission is voting on tonight. But if you call back our 311 number and select option five, that's the correct time and place for, um, general public comment.
And is that tonight?
That is tonight. It'll be later in the meeting. Uh, Mayor Bliss will more than likely make an announcement stating that now you can call in with anything, any topic you'd like to speak on.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, may I point a order? Is there room to screen the call so that we can make sure that the callers are aware if this is the correct time? I don't know, um, City Clerk, if that's possible, but it may help if we could so that people will know when is the best time for them to call in.
Not aware that we have that option unless something has changed. Uh, City Clerk, is that an option?
That is not an option because they're caught, they're calling in, they're on a, they're on a hold. So there's not like a two-way system.
Yes, me, I wonder if IT can maybe work on that. Um, but let me, let me, um, say this again. It sounds like a lot of the people who are calling in are watching the, the meeting as they're calling. Um, because we can hear it in the background and they're asked to close it, to shut it down. So just to be really clear, we have, we have a number of action items and then agenda items that are on our agenda for tonight. Many of them we talked about earlier today. Um, so this first opportunity for public comment is only on agenda items. So when you call, we ask you to be explicit about what agenda item you're talking about. So if it's an appointment committee, item number one, uh, community development item, number three. Our agenda is posted online and you can look at the agenda and those are the comments that we're taking right now.
And just for clarification, defunding the police department is not an agenda item.
Thank you, City Manager. Uh, Daniel, are there others in the queue?
There are. Here comes the next caller. Caller, you're on with the city commission. Please state your name, the city in which you live, and the agenda item that you'd wish to speak on. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Hi, my name is Karen Myers and I live in Comstock Park. Um, I want to comment on the resolution item regarding a $250,000 investment in the La Luca Fund. Um, I certainly hope that you will pass this resolution as it is long overdue and it is truly the very least that the city can do to help this community. I want to point out that two groups, the Grand Rapids Area Mutual Aid Fund Network and Movimento Cusca GR have been doing the work of providing mutual aid for the undocumented community since the start of the pandemic. They did so because this community has received no federal aid and no aid from the city. And yet these are the very people who do so much of the hard work that makes Grand Rapids run. Um, these are workers who have had to continue working in unsafe pandemic conditions because otherwise their families would not have food on the table. Time and time again, you tout Grand Rapids as a welcoming city for immigrants and immigrants stepped up during this pandemic to help each other, to help those in their community who are receiving no aid. But what has Grand Rapids done for them? You have not stepped up to help them during the pandemic until now, you will. And you refuse to keep them safe from ICE. You allow the Grand Rapids Police Department to keep on its staff a police chief whose racial profiling of a US Marine born here in Grand Rapids had that man ending up in ICE custody for days. Immigrants in this city rightfully do not trust you. So yes, I do hope you will pass and give this, what is really a small amount of money to this community that needs it so much and that you will indeed do more and start listening to the immigrant community when they come to you time and time again asking for help because they are what makes Grand Rapids great. Thanks very much.
Thank you, caller. Caller, you're on with the city commission. You have three minutes. Please state your name, the city in which you live, and the agenda item you wish to speak on. Your time starts now. Hello, caller? Caller?
Yeah, hello?
Hi, yes, you have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Okay, thank you. Uh, my name is Victor Williams. I'm the president of Boston Square Neighborhood Association and I'm calling about the, uh, to speak on the Amplify Development. Uh, I'd like to encourage the city to continue to support, uh, this development taking place.
Hold on, we have a public hearing on that item, Daniel.
Oh, apologies, sir.
This is a scheduled public hearing, so we'll be opening that up next, next. So let me, uh, there, there's three scheduled public hearings, so you can call back during that one. And that's the first one, so you can call and hit number two. Uh, that's a rezoning request for Amplify. So if you're in the queue for that, that is a separate public hearing. Uh, and may, I wonder, I, I, I don't know, uh, City Clerk, maybe we can post this on our Facebook just so it's a little bit more clear if people need to refer back to it.
Mayor, we've, we've tweeted that information out from our communications office.
Okay, thank you.
Was that clear, caller?
Thank you, Mayor, I appreciate it. Thank you for your help.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
There are no more callers in this queue, Mayor.
Okay, thanks, Daniel. All right, so let's move on to our commission items. The first item is approval of our minutes from our last commission meeting and this is from July 21st. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
All right, supported. Any questions or comments about that? All right, City Clerk, you want to call the question?
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Connor?
Yes.
Commissioner Moody?
Yes.
Commissioner Sassi?
Yes.
Commissioner Linnear?
Yes.
Mayor Bliss?
Yes, it carries. All right, next that will take us to petitions and petitions.
Pages are sticking, sorry. First one is a communication received from Rodney Brown regarding quality of life for the African-American community in Grand Rapids.
That is received and filed.
Communication received from the public regarding the police.
That's received and filed.
Just, just for the record, there were several, um, correspondence. Um, communications from Kristen Travolin regarding their resignation from their urban forestry committee.
That is referred to the Committee on Appointments.
Communication, seven of them, received regarding the Grand Rapids Police Department.
That's received and filed.
Communication received from the Roosevelt Park Neighborhood Association expressing support for the proposed truck route ordinance amendment.
That's received and filed.
And communication received from Joan Heiser Honig, expressing support for the Boston Square Together Project.
And that is also received and filed. Next that will take us to reports of city officers and we, we have two items before us tonight.
The first one is a comptroller's report for the period of July 9, 2020 through July 29, 2020 in the amount of $52,107,357.78.
That is received and filed.
And treasury report for the period of July 7, 2020 through July 27, 2020.
And that is also received and filed. All right, next that will take us to our consent agenda. Our consent agenda are items that we voted on this morning at one of our four standing committee meetings. And during that vote, it was voted on unanimously. So tonight with one voice vote, we will go ahead and adopt those items. Can I get a motion for the consent agenda?
Well.
Support.
All right, moved and supported. Commissioners, any additional comments or questions? We had a lot of good meetings this morning. All right, City Clerk, will you call the vote on that?
Commissioner O'Connor?
Yes.
Commissioner Moody?
Yes.
Commissioner Sassi?
Yes.
Commissioner Linnear?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Mayor Bliss?
Yes, it carries. All right, next that will take us to our notices to be adopted. And Commissioners, we have six ordinances before us tonight, so we'll start with the first one.
First one is an ordinance amending section one of the budget ordinance 2020-15 for the fiscal year 2021.
All right, can I get a motion?
So moved. Support.
All right, moved and supported.
Oh, sorry, amendment number three. I didn't read the whole.
Okay, so number three, thank you, uh, City Clerk. Uh, Mr. Commissioner O'Connor, here of our fiscal committee, you want to tell us about this?
Uh, yeah, thank you, Mayor. Uh, so, uh, the big item on here tonight is, uh, the, uh, Fiscal Services Department Budget Reappropriations. Uh, so this is, uh, essentially funds that, uh, were left over during our last budget, uh, cycle that did not get expended and they are getting rolled into funds to be, uh, utilized, uh, and expended during this budget season. Uh, we received a grant from the Great Lakes, uh, Department of Energy. Uh, we're going to expend some money to do some, uh, some library asset management. Uh, and then, uh, there is, uh, there, uh, the executive office is going to appropriate, uh, $840,000 from the general fund, uh, for, uh, coronavirus economic recovery. And, uh, there's a match for the, uh, 2016 cost grant hiring program to support two, uh, two folks.
Okay, great, thank you, Commissioner. Uh, Commissioners, any questions or comments? All right, City Clerk, will you call the vote on that?
Commissioner Moody?
Yes.
Commissioner Sassi? Commissioner Linnear?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Connor? Commissioner O'Connor, sorry.
Yes.
Sorry, Mayor Bliss?
Yes, and can I get a motion to give this immediate effect?
So moved.
Thank you, moved and supported. City Clerk, you want to call the vote on that?
Commissioner Sassi?
Yes.
Commissioner Linnear?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Connor?
Yes.
Commissioner Moody?
Yes.
Mayor Bliss?
Yes. All right, Commissioners, next that will take us to our second ordinance and the following, um, ordinances, five ordinances are related to employee benefit, uh, range changes and then classifications.
So for, um, ordinance amending section 4.1 of ordinance 2019-55 range change, employing benefits assistance.
Can I get a motion?
So moved.
So moved, support.
All right, moved and supported. Uh, Commissioner O'Connor, anything to add on this? Oh, you're, you're muted, Commissioner.
Oh, sorry, Mayor. Uh, yeah, I can just quick speak to all these too. I mean, there, there's five items coming before us tonight, uh, that were presented to us, uh, this morning by our Human Resources Department. These were all jobs which had, uh, reviews done of their compensation ranges. And in order to make them, uh, even more competitive to the marketplace or bring them in line with parity of other, uh, folks in similar, in other departments that do similar job function. Uh, the, these ranges were all adjusted for all five of these job descriptions.
Great, thank you, Commissioner. Uh, Commissioners, unless you feel the need to go through each one, I think we all received information. Um, and just to note that these were reviewed and approved by our Civil Service Board in July. So, uh, any questions or comments? All right, City Clerk, you want to call the question?
Uh, Commissioner Linnear?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Connor?
Yes.
Commissioner Moody?
Yes.
Commissioner Sassi?
Yes.
Mayor Bliss?
Yes, it carries. All right, that'll take us to our third ordinance tonight.
An ordinance amending section 4.5 of ordinance 2019-55 range change for the classification of light equipment mechanic.
Mayor, this is, uh, my colleague, uh, Commissioner O'Connor just shared that. So this is, um, again, just another item, uh, regarding the classification of this specific role. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
We move in support or, or no?
No, we didn't move in support.
Sounds like Commissioner, uh, Jones moved it. Do I have a support?
Support.
All right, uh, City Clerk, you want to call the question on this?
Yeah, Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Connor?
Yeah, yes.
Commissioner Moody?
Yes.
Commissioner Sassi?
Yes.
Commissioner Ruppert? I'm sorry.
He's absent.
Now I got it. Commissioner Linnear?
Yes.
Mayor Bliss?
Yes, it carries. All right, that'll take us to our fourth ordinance tonight.
It is an ordinance amending section 4.3 of ordinance 2019-56 range change Assistant Planning Director.
So moved.
Support.
All right, then supported. Anything to add to this? All right, any questions, Commissioners? All right, City Clerk, you want to call the vote?
Commissioner O'Connor?
Yes.
Commissioner Moody?
Yes.
Commissioner Sassi?
Yes.
Commissioner Linnear?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Mayor Bliss?
Yes, it carries. All right, that'll take us to our fifth ordinance tonight.
A board, ordinance amending section 4.2 of ordinance 2019-56 range change for recreation supervisor.
All right, can I get a motion?
So moved.
So moved.
Support.
All right, moved and supported. Uh, Commissioners, any questions or comments about this one?
Mayor, I have a quick question. I'm sorry, Pastor Commissioner, did you have a comment?
No, I didn't. I was just making a statement.
Um, so it just says recreation supervisor. If I, if my memory serves me correctly, when we were reviewing it in civil service, it was Parks and Recreation. I don't know if that matters at this point, but just thought I'd bring it up. City Manager, do you know if it, if that matters? I want to make sure that we don't have to revisit it if it isn't titled appropriately.
Uh, I wasn't aware of that nuance. I'd ask, um, Ms. Foster, she's on the, or Mr. Matthews to clarify that.
Um, yeah, my, my understanding from all the paperwork that's gone through that it's been a recreation supervisor throughout. They may have misspoken from the podium, but, uh, the actual job classification is recreation supervisor.
Thank you. Yeah, thanks. I, I'm looking at the memo and it, it is clear that it's Parks and Rec Department. Um, so I don't know if that is helpful, but.
Ms. Foster confirms, uh, what Mr. Matthews just said.
Great, thank you. Commissioners, any other questions or comments? All right, City Clerk, you want to call the vote?
Yes, Commissioner Moody?
Yes.
Commissioner Sassi?
Yes.
Commissioner Linnear?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Connor?
Yes.
Mayor Bliss?
Yes, it carries. All right, this will take us to our last ordinance to be adopted tonight.
An ordinance amending section, section 4.1 of ordinance 2019-56 new classification, intelligent defense coordinator.
I'll move it.
Support.
All right, moved and supported. Commissioners, any, uh, questions about this one?
Well, ma'am.
All right. City Clerk, you want to call the vote?
Yep. Commissioner Sassi?
Yes.
Commissioner Ruppert?
He's absent.
Oh, my word. I crossed them out on some of these lists. Commissioner Linnear?
A long day. It was up late this week.
I just, I miss him so much. Commissioner Linnear?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Connor?
Yes.
Commissioner Moody?
Yes.
Mayor Bliss?
Yes, it carries. All right, thank you, Commissioners, uh, and City Clerk. That'll now take us to public hearings. And so, um, we have three scheduled public hearings. And so let me explain those for those who are watching who want to call in and speak to one of these items. Um, the very first one that I'll open up momentarily is a public hearing on the Boston Square Together rezoning request. Uh, second one is on truck routes and the third one is on the Downtown Improvement District Special Assessment. Uh, so again, if you want to call in, you can call into 311 or 456-3000. Uh, for this first one, you hit one and then number two. For the second one, you hit one and then three. And for the, um, third one, you hit one and then four. Uh, so this public hearing is a public hearing on the proposed rezoning of 1150 Adam Street, Southeast, 1435, 1451 Fuller, 1428, 1432, 1436, 1440, 1444, 1448, 1460, 1480 and 1500 Kalamazoo Avenue, um, Southeast to SD PRD. And what that stands for is Special District Plan Redevelopment District to facilitate a mixed use development. Uh, so before we open this up for public comment, I will turn to our planning director, Ms. Turkelson, to give us a little bit of background on this. I see we have a number of guests with us as well. We'll give them an opportunity to speak. Uh, I'll open it up for my colleagues on the commission to ask any questions and then we'll open it up for public comment. Uh, Ms. Turkelson?
Thank you, Commissioner. Good evening. This is a request to rezone 12 parcels that the mayor did identify specifically and it totals approximately seven acres within the Boston Square neighborhood. These parcels will be zoned from a low-density residential and traditional business area to a planned redevelopment district or PRD. The development project is included with the South Town, within the South Town Business Area specific plan. So the proposed PRD is a part of a larger redevelopment plan for the Boston Square Business District and it's commonly known as the Boston Square Together Project. This is a multi-stakeholder effort, including the city, Oakdale Neighbors, Boston Square Neighborhood Association and Amplify GR. These stakeholders are working together to develop a partnership agreement that is known as the Boston Square Together Initial Voluntary Equitable Development Agreement, Development and Community Partnership Agreement. Uh, the city's Economic Development Director, Jeremiah Gracias, will speak more shortly on this agreement. However, it's important to note that this is not and cannot be tied directly to the rezoning consideration. So what you have before you is just the zoning consideration. It is not the actual agreement itself. I believe you're considering that at your August 25th meeting. The parcels that are included within the PRD are generally bounded by Adams to the north, Evergreen, what will be the Evergreen extension to the south, Fuller to the east and Kalamazoo to the west. The plan will result in the removal of all of the existing structures and the development of nine new buildings. The buildings will vary in height between two and four stories, approximately, or provide approximately 25,000 square feet of new commercial space and a maximum of about 270 residential units within three housing types. Uh, in addition, the, the project will also provide required parking and green space that will be satisfied throughout the site. I mentioned that the project does include the extension of Evergreen that will, uh, extend between Kalamazoo and Fuller. So on January 9th, the Planning Commission conducted their public hearing and following a fairly robust meeting, uh, they ultimately did recommend approval of the rezoning, uh, finding that the rezoning was consistent with the purpose of the zoning ordinance and the goals of the BASB. Uh, the Planning Commission's recommendation was, uh, about a conceptual site plan approval and that each phase of development would return to the Planning Commission for final site plan. And we've talked a little bit about this in previous meetings that the project doesn't yet have the details needed for final site plan approval, but that is not at all uncommon for projects of this scale. So in light of the concerns, uh, raised by the community at the January meeting, the development team since then has been working with the reference stakeholders towards that partnership agreement that I previously mentioned. Again, that's a separate and distinct process. Uh, and due to the limitations of the state zoning enabling legislation, it cannot be considered as part of the rezoning consideration. So the Planning Commission and City Commission must evaluate the rezoning against the requirements of the zoning ordinance. Uh, I will defer to Mr. Gracias on any comments he may wish to add regarding that process. So that was a very high level overview of the project itself. Uh, it was, uh, reviewed, uh, in more detail, both at your community development agreement, I believe, at an economic project team meeting. But certainly if you have any questions, I'm available to assist.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Gracia, you want to add anything?
Uh, yes, uh, good evening commissioners. So, uh, as, um, uh, the agenda item is focused on zoning changes required for the Boston Square Together Project. The Economic Development Office continues to engage with neighborhood partners, including Amplify GR, Oakdale Neighbors, Boston Square Neighborhood Association, in drafting an agreement that Ms. Turkelson referred to as the Boston Square Together Initial Voluntary Equitable Development and Community Partnership Agreement. This agreement is based on the city's voluntary equitable development agreement policy and successful work of neighbors of Belknap Lookout, Grand Valley State University in the city, that was memorialized in a series of previous agreements, providing guidelines for planning, investment, engagement in that particular neighborhood. This proposed agreement takes this work to, to the next level of community partnerships and benefit. As we all know, this is a catalyst project for Boston Square and Oakdale neighborhood areas and addresses many of the core principles of our city and equitable economic development and mobility strategic plans. The agreement addresses homeownership, affordable housing, business ownership, sustaining, uh, existing businesses, green space development, and creation of a business loan fund to assist with business development for businesses within the project area. It also creates a long-term relationship between all the parties focused on making the Boston Square Together vision a reality. Amplify GR, the Oakdale Neighborhoods, the Boston Square Neighborhood Association, the city, and the city of Grand Rapids have been actively engaged in discussions with many community and nonprofit stakeholders to move forward with the initial phases of this Boston Square Together project. The parties in the agreement recognize and explicitly identify the importance of ensuring racial, cultural, and economic diversity and minimizing displacement in all aspects of the projects. All the parties aspire to provide quality of life to current and future residents and their families and increase homeownership, education, health and wellbeing, employment, and increase minority business ownership. The Initial Voluntary Equitable Development and Community Partnership Agreement serves as a guide for future agreements between all parties and impacted stakeholders. So this agreement has to be, has been agreed to in principle and is pending final approval by all the parties. It will be presented for city commission consideration and approval at the August 25th, uh, city commission meeting. And wanted to make sure that you got this update as it relates, but does not, as Ms. Turkelson said, dictate the vote tonight and the zoning, uh, hearing. So thank you and happy to answer any questions.
Mayor, I do want to interject if this is okay. I, I had hoped, um, to show the presentation, uh, that I prepared for, to show the site plan on the screen and, and very quickly go through it for the commission if you think that would be beneficial. And so I would need Joel to make me the presenter if that is.
Yep, make you the presenter.
Mayor, I do think, e- even if not for the commission, because we've probably seen quite a few of the, um, um, the slide decks that have been presented with a lot of the options. I think the public probably would benefit from seeing it, Kristen, if you could.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah, this is a, a really significant project. So I think taking the time to do that is important.
Absolutely. So bear with me, I have never shared my screen on WebEx. Is it showing to everybody else?
Yes, we can see it.
It's not in presentation mode though.
Is it now?
Yes, yep.
Okay, this might be the best I can do. I apologize for my tech savvy. So here on the screen is a, is an aerial photo that shows the extent of the project. Uh, sort of in your, what would I would consider your northwest corner would be Adams Street. Uh, and then certainly you can see Kalamazoo running, uh, generally straight across your screen. So as previously mentioned, uh, the vast majority of the project is currently, or I'm sorry, some of, most of the project is within the low density residential zone district, uh, which is generally our single family, uh, zone district, uh, that you can see does comport with what is happening to the north of Adams. Uh, the bulk of the site, uh, is located within our traditional business area. And again, uh, the purpose and intent of that district is to support a pedestrian oriented environment, compact development, ground floor active uses, and a strong, uh, urban wall along the street edge. So here we can show the progress of the sites. Uh, again, to the north side of the proposed development or the proposed PRD would be the LDR, the Residential Zone District. And to the south would be the Traditional Business Area. Uh, what we are proposing today is to rezone the extent of the project limits to a planned redevelopment district. Everything south of the, uh, Evergreen extension would remain a traditional business area. And as you'll see on the site plan, uh, that does generally include a urban open space and a community center slash childcare facility, which are uses that are permitted in the TBA zone district. So there really wasn't a need to encumber, uh, that land under a, a PRD or Planned Redevelopment District. So when the planning commission did look through what sorts of uses would be appropriate, um, effectively, they did tie to a mixed density residential, which is a more, a greater density residential zone district that is more flexible in terms of the types of residential housing types that are permitted. Um, and so they did, uh, reinforce the desire to keep uh, all of the uses that would be permitted within the proposed commercial, the ground floor commercial, to be consistent within the traditional business area, traditional business zone district. So here's the conceptual site plan, uh, that you'd seen before and that the planning commission, uh, recommended approval. So in the north side of the development fronting on Adams are your town home style developments. And I think they are intended to be owner occupied, the T1, T2, and T3. So those are the individual townhomes. They are two story in size. And generally, uh, they're consistent with the type of development that would otherwise be permitted in the LDR zone district, or in this case, the MDR zone district. You can see along the Kalamazoo frontage, what is shown in the, the pinky red color. Uh, those are buildings F1, F2, and F3. Uh, that's where we continue to reinforce the desire for that traditional business district, uh, requirement, where we have active ground floor uses fronting on Kalamazoo. And that totals approximately 24, 25,000 square feet of new commercial space. Um, the, the, the upper floors of those buildings would be residential, which again is considered, uh, appropriate within a traditional business area. As we go towards the center of the site and then towards Fuller, we start to scale up with the building massing. So it is residential, both ground floor and, uh, floors two through four. So the buildings would be residential. Uh, and then the building S1, which fronts on Fuller, would be a four story senior residential building. And that would be appropriate, given the scale of the housing commission's, uh, residential development across the street, which is five stories. So I think that this development is largely consistent with the building form requirements that we already have today under the current zoning. But this PRD zone district does provide both certainty to the community as to what's going to be built, but also provides the needed flexibility for larger sites like this. So with conceptual site of plan approval, we do not yet have, uh, elevations that are building specific tied to the site plan that you're seeing here. And so again, that's pretty typical to make sure that the, the community is generally comfortable with the, uh, the layout, the proposed uses of the plan. And then the next state phase that the planning commission would go back to is really look at what specific building types or elevations would be assigned to each building as they are, uh, moving forward. But under conceptual site plan approval, they are required to give some indication about what style of development so that we have some reference points to utilize when we go back through final site plan approval. So the six images are just precedent images that you can see that are, uh, would be assigned to a mixed, uh, to the mixed use development buildings. I'm going to flip back to the site plan to show you that the mixed use buildings that would be, uh, assigned, that architectural character again, would be the, the buildings F1, F2, and F3 that are along the Kalamazoo frontage. And so you can see the style with the, uh, the clapboard siding, the, the metal panel siding, um, and quite a few, uh, quite a bit of transparency, largely concentrated on the ground floor, but also good transparency along the upper floors. Here's the precedent imagery that would be utilized to help guide the planning commission, uh, should this project move forward in their determination of whether the residential architecture is appropriate for the buildings that were both to the townhomes that were fronting on Adams and also at the interior of the site as well as along Fuller. So these images, uh, largely the material would remain the same. With aluminum panels, you can see brickwork. Uh, and it's still a significant amount of glazing on all of the street facing elevations. And that was a high level overview with a little bit more specificity than I verbalized. I know I need to figure out how to stop sharing. Uh, so hopefully, uh, that helps the commission, uh, and the community understand what the specific project is being considered to, uh, for a public hearing this evening.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Turkelson. Um, I do see Mr. Ippele here, so I'll give him an opportunity to add anything else, although that was a very thorough, um, overview. Uh, and then I'll see if anyone has any questions.
Great, thank you, uh, mayor and good evening, uh, commission. Um, yeah, I think Kristen, you did a great job of, of giving an overview of this work. And I think really, you know, the, the effort that, uh, has been, uh, uh, in front of us is really to create, um, a, a holistic approach to community development in a way that, that's singularly focused on eliminating, reducing the disparities that exist in the better community. And so, so the way that we do it is really, you know, intentionally trying to live in that space of recognizing some of the economic disparities that exist in the third ward compared to other places. Um, you know, take, uh, and, and, and gain greater insights in terms of some of the housing shortages that we've had that the commission has been recently discussing. Um, but also making sure that we're, we're working in a way that's facilitating that investment in a way that's mitigating against gentrification. So, so really this has been a holistic approach to, um, try to inject new, um, uh, investments within communities, but doing it in a way that ensures that, uh, local neighbors are the ones that are, are participating and benefiting from neighborhood growth. And so, so we've really have appreciated just the opportunity to continue to engage, uh, with city, both our elected officials as well as city staff. Uh, but more importantly, I think just as, as we've journeyed through this work to really, uh, hear the indigenous wisdom of, of what, uh, many in the community have, have shared. And I think we feel very proud at this point. This is a, a, just a great representation of, of what the community has been asking for on the Boston Square and Oakdale Neighbors and, uh, Neighborhoods. And so I think we just really feel, uh, excited about delivering some of these, uh, community assets in a way that, that's supporting, uh, a variety of different neighbors.
Thank you, Ms. Ippele. Um, commissioners, any questions, uh, before I open it up for public comment? All right, Commissioner Lanier?
Mayor, I do have some, um, comments just to quickly thank the staff who have all been working very hard on this project for a number of years. Um, thank you, Kristen, for the presentation that you provided. I think it helps to provide, um, context for the community as well as the commission. I, I know we have been hearing and having conversations about this project for a number of years. And so it's important to kind of bring that full circle so that people know kind of where things landed. Um, I'd also like to, um, call out, um, Jeremiah as well as Eric, Jeremiah Garcia, Gr- Gracia, excuse me, and, um, Eric DeLong, and, um, Jono, I don't know if he's on here tonight, um, for the work that they've done into, um, having conversations with the community regarding the VITA and community, um, agreement. Um, and then to Amplify and Peter for, um, their steadfastness in making sure that they continue to have conversations with the community to bring the community on board. And I think the patience that this project has taken, um, in order to get it to as close to right as possible, at least at this stage in where we are. Um, I am hopeful for what, what the future holds for this project and the future agreements that will come out of, um, the VITA that we currently have. Um, I'm eager to hear how the community will respond. I know I have been having quite a few meetings the last few weeks, um, with community organizations, individual community members, hearing their thoughts, ideas, concerns, and even, um, appreciation, um, for this project. Um, we are, um, very grateful, um, Commissioner, Pastor Commissioner Moody and I to have a project of this magnitude happening in the third ward. Um, and as grateful as we are, we also wanted to make sure that, um, we challenged the status quo to make sure that whatever the project was, that it was going to be something unique so that we know that we've stretched ourselves, um, to capacity to get what's best for the community. Um, some of the highlights of the project that I think, um, warrants, um, highlighting tonight are the, um, that, that are part of the VITA community agreement, um, are the business ownership opportunities that exist, the business loan that Amplify, um, the dollars that they've allocated for business loans, I think is another highlight. Um, another highlight is that from the initial proposal, um, of 20 homeownership opportunities, it has now grown to 22 to now 40. Um, and with the caveat that we will not stop there and that we'll be looking and vetting other options, um, and in that, on the parcel, the nine acre parcel, as well as neighboring parcels to see if we can grow homeownership even further. Um, there are also commercial and business ownership opportunities and making sure that, uh, we are looking at diverse neighborhood, um, businesses to, um, serve as partners and vendors to do the work, um, that this project will yield. And so I just wanted to kind of share those few highlights, um, as we go into the public hearing. Um, I know we have a long way to go, but I just wanted to briefly say those things and to thank everyone who's present here tonight. Um, and to my colleagues too, because you all have, um, really asked a lot of questions about the project and wanted to stay abreast of any of the changes that were occurring. And, um, wanted to make sure that the, the, what the people wanted out of this project was happening. And so I appreciate you all, um, questioning, um, Commissioner Moody and I and asking us for strategies and updates on what was happening. So thank you all as well.
Great, thanks commissioner. Uh, Commissioner Moody, anything to add?
No matter, mayor, I concur.
Okay, thank you commissioner. All right, so with that, we'll go ahead and open this up for public comment. Hopefully, uh, Mr. Williams is still on the call. I know that he wanted to speak to this. So, Daniel, uh, do we have folks in the queue?
We do. Here comes the first caller.
Okay.
Caller, you're on with the city commission. Please state your name. Can you lower the volume on your device, please?
I'm trying.
Thank you.
You waited on hold for so long.
Right. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Thanks. My name is Leah Baker. Um, I'm a 15 year Grand Rapids resident. I'm a six year resident of, um, 49507 Boston Square Oakdale Neighborhood. Um, and I'm calling in support of the rezoning request for, um, all of the many, uh, parcels that were listed for, um, Amplify GR for the Boston Square, um, Together Project. Um, as a resident of Boston Square and Oakdale Neighborhood, um, I'm really excited about, um, this project. I think it's a really great opportunity for, um, you know, growth and, um, a healthier community and just amazing things and the potential that, that it can offer. Um, and I'm just also calling in support of the, um, community partnership agreement that they've, um, worked so hard to come up with, with, um, with the partners that they're involved in Oakdale Neighbors and Boston Square Neighborhood Association and Amplify GR. Um, and I don't know if they're touching on that, but I just thought that I'd survey in. Um, also, I just think it's going to be a great, um, asset to the community and a stepping stone to a healthier Grand Rapids in general. And with that, I yield my time.
Thank you caller.
Thanks.
Caller, you're on with the city commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Hi, my name is Jenny Griffin. I live in Grand Rapids and I'm calling about Boston Square Together Project. I'm here in support of the project. I grew up in the Boston Square Neighborhood. Uh, three years ago, my husband and I had the opportunity to buy my childhood home, a home that had originally belonged to my great grandparent. And it represented our roots in a community for more than 50 years. We pushed our family into this neighborhood intentionally because it had grown into a community that is even more diverse and inclusive than I want it to be. We want our children to grow up in an area that has rooted values such as family, neighbors, the inclusion of others, as well as diversity. When Amplify GR moved into the neighborhood and the development talks began, you know, it sparked a lot of controversy, as we all know. Uh, for other neighbors and myself, this development felt like a threat that might pick up our roots, our deep roots in cultural, racial, and socioeconomic diversity. The process hasn't been easy, but it is a huge testament to the staying power and commitment of Amplify GR. They have provided a platform for neighbors and organizations embedded in the community, such as Oakdale Neighbors, to push them, I mean, really challenge them to ensure this process and development would provide equitable outcomes for my neighbors and my family. Today I speak for myself and my neighbors who poured over the community partnership agreement for those, you know, who spent countless nights with other neighbors working through the issues and the worries, um, even with Commissioner Lanier. So thank you for saying that. with Commissioner Lanier. So thank you for saying that um and giving your point of view. And we look forward to approval of the Boston Square Together Project. So thanks to Amplify for leading us in the creation of one of the most robust and innovative approaches to development that I think our city has ever seen. I invite my neighbors to join and uh participate in events and or stop by Amplify. Uh, I'm eager to see small businesses opened by my neighbors for green space, uh, access to jobs, actual affordable housing and education. But most of all, I'm excited for the fourth generation of my family, my kids, to thrive in this neighborhood, the same neighborhood that once welcomed their great-grandmother who worked as a waitress at the beloved Boston House Restaurant. So thank you for listening, and we look forward to seeing this project move forward.
Thank you, caller. Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Hello, um, my name is Andrea Owens. I live in Grand Rapids. I've lived here all of my life. Uh, 23 years, um, I've been a resident of Evergreen Street, so I'm right in the heart of this um lovely community. I've seen so much happen to this community over the years, none of which has been very positive. But it seems that uh both an authority have given up on one of the most culturally diverse areas in this city. This area and the hard-working neighbors living here have been looked over all too often for far too long and deserve better. It's time to revitalize the resources, restore economic growth for everyone in this neighborhood. Um, you have a gr- an agreement and opportunity, um, this agreement of people coming together uh with a passion to rebuild an area, they put their heart and soul into this. Um, and this um, this agreement has the potential, and this uh project has the potential and capacity to help bring more businesses, creating more jobs for people to work and live in their neighborhood, providing opportunities for entrepreneurs to thrive. As an entrepreneur myself, I feel excited and hopeful for what this project could bring for this area. Um, better education for our children, our future leaders, better housing opportunities for residents in the area, whether they have the opportunity to move into the newer um facilities that'll be um created, or to rejuvenate their current residence, which in turn should increase the value of the homes in this area. That's exciting. Um, and the list can go on and on. Um, this is a community for families to stay and continue raising their children and their children's children. Uh, that's a lifelong investment that you just can't attach a dollar to. Um, and it's going to change the landscape of what is currently um Boston Square into something vibrant, um where people can come together and and enjoy the um area that they live in. Um, and so I I just want to see a change where I live. I've seen it everywhere else but in this Boston Square Neighborhood. Seen it everywhere else. Um, it's been too many broken promises, people uh bringing people to develop without asking neighbors for input. But this current process, this Community Partner Agreement, um, this, the way um the the agreement, it's going to include, it has included neighborhood input. And again, that just brings hope. So I, you know, I encourage other neighbors in this area to stop by Amplify and get involved. I myself was one, a resident who was a little hesitant about all of this.
Thank you, Ms. Owens. That's three minutes. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Yes, District Commissioner Robert S. Gormack. Hello, everybody. I am very proud to have sat down with Amplify and the Neighborhood Committee to talk about some of the great things that are coming on and participate in some of the planning that will provide increased minority equity, which is very important in our city and one of our diverse goals. This development will also produce new, long-lasting, sustainable jobs, as well as many minority participation um when it comes to construction of this development. We also have to take account that ex-felons, and I do put an emphasis on ex-ex felons must be afforded an opportunity to protect and benefit in the jobs that are going to be available while building this mixed-use residential and commercial development. I also would allow the opportunity of this development to help us as a city to reach our affordable housing goals, as well as produce more housing choices for the wonderful residents who are my beautiful and wonderful neighbors here in the 49507 Boston Square area. There's also going to be a creation of new small businesses, and I know there are some laws that have been talked about. Um, I'm also pushing for philanthropists and people in the area to come up with some grant money that would be great for some of the small businesses as we uh also look to increase minority equity. Um, it's very much needed in the post-pandemic era that we're wishing for. Uh, as we go through this COVID-19 shutdown, coming out of it on the other side, um, there's going to be a lot of help needed for these small businesses. But I'm super proud of this opportunity to increase much-needed senior housing in our community. I sat down uh with Amplify. We've also visited some senior housing in other areas that gave us a little insight on what the senior housing is going to look like for our senior citizens who I know are listening here. Um, the development will economically help boost this neighborhood to new levels. We also discussed a childcare center that would might be part learning centers uh for our children that are going to definitely need it as they're being born right now, and some of our uh toddlers who are here in this new era with us. Um, Amplify, uh, congratulations on this development. I'm asking the City of Grand Rapids to support it. And as I say, um, in the times we are now, development in the third ward is much needed. So this is King County Commissioner Robert S. Gormack calling in to say I support it. Hope I didn't go over my three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Caller, can you please lower the volume on your device? You have three minutes. Please state your name and the city in which you live. Your time starts now.
Hello, this is Amanda Howe. I'm a resident of the City of Grand Rapids. Um, I'm part of Grand Rapids Home for All. We have raised several concerns over the years about this project and most recently called on Amplify to enter into a voluntary equitable development agreement for this project. We have met with and talked about this and are glad to see the expanded community engagement and partnership of residents and Neighborhood Association. Uh, this neighborhood, many of its neighbors in Grand Rapids have been disinvested for decades and deserves investment that will benefit all the residents who live there. This massive redevelopment has so much potential for good, and even so, um, uh, even despite these efforts, many who rent there are still vulnerable to displacement as investment comes to the neighborhood. So I'm calling on the city to invest in this neighborhood now. You owe it to the residents of Boston Square to protect the naturally affordable housing that is a direct result of this disinvestment that allows properties to become industry-free there and vulnerable to mass redevelopment. Investing in this neighborhood now should go beyond the Community Partnership Agreement to include offering incentives to local landlords to freeze rent or incentivize rent that is affordable at affordable rates in the neighborhood. It should include advocating the RPOA for housing stability efforts in this neighborhood. It should include testing the limits of state law by declaring a state of housing emergency in Grand Rapids, not only Boston Square, but in all of GR, to allow rent freeze um increases to remain that could stabilize housing in this neighborhood during the redevelopment project, but also would help residents across Grand Rapids during this difficult economic crisis due to COVID-19. Finally, it's critical that you rate this project as a top priority of the city for Lytech funding so this project can move forward without delays to the affordable housing slated. If the affordable housing lags behind because of approval of Lytech, this could make current residents more vulnerable to displacement. I apologize the efforts of the residents in Boston Square Neighborhood to bring ideas to the table and band together to prevent displacement. I hope this project results in more affordable housing for residents and allows every current resident in the neighborhood who wants to stay in their homes to be able to remain there and benefit from the new amenities that will be added by the Amplify project. Thank you.
Thank you, caller.
Caller, can you please lower the volume on your device?
Yes.
Yes, you have three minutes. Please state your name and the city in which you live. Your time starts now.
Hello, this is Victor Williams. I'm president of Boston Square Neighborhood Association. I'm a lifelong resident of Grand Rapids, Michigan, and a 25-year resident of Boston Square Neighborhood. Uh, I just want to speak today about the development taking place in Boston Square with Amplify GR. We are excited about this development and the uh potential that it has for entrepreneurs in the area, as well as new homeowners in the area. Uh, as you've heard, many speakers come before me, all of those with elaborate and great points. Um, I want to echo the sentiments of Commissioner Robert S. with the uh equity. We are asking for the city with your support to help push um this uh Community Partnership Agreement to include more equity for uh our future entrepreneurs and entrepreneurs uh in the times we're living in right now, uh, to take advantage of this um development here. Uh, we are looking for help in that area. And, you know, I've spoken with several of you uh before about this. Um, and your support in this area will be great. This um CTA that we have developed is awesome. It's a great first step, but the we have a long way to go. As we've come a long way to get here, we still have a long way to go. Um, so this is just phase one. We're excited about this development. We're looking forward to pushing it forward uh with your help and working side by side with the city to make sure that this is the best uh development that it can be for the residents of Boston Square.
Hello, caller?
Yes.
Yeah. Oh, was that was that all? You're cut out for a second.
Was that the end of time?
No, you still have one more, one minute if you'd like to speak.
Okay, no, I'm good. Go ahead.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, caller. Have a good night.
All right.
Thank you. There are no more callers in the queue, Mayor.
Thank you, Daniel. All right, appreciate everyone who called in. Uh, we'll go ahead and close that public comment period, and this will be referred back to our committee of the whole. Uh, and that will take us to our second public hearing tonight, and this is a public hearing on proposed ordinance to amend section 10.36, and this is categorized under truck routes of Article 3, Chapter 181, Title 10 of the Code of the City of Grand Rapids. So we have Mr. Naromar here with us tonight to tell us about this ordinance. Uh, then I will open it up for public comment. Mr. Naromar?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Really appreciate the time tonight to talk about this. Just for all of those members of the public who are going to talk about this or just want to know more about it, I'm going to give a quick little overview before the public hearing. Um, so the city's truck route ordinance regulates the operation of trucks on the city roadways. Uh, it was last revised in November of 1981. Um, as you can imagine, over the last 40 years, changes in character connectivity and ownership of roadways have occurred. Um, also, a lot of really great neighborhood planning processes, like the Granville Avenue Area-Specific Plan, have also recommended changes to the established truck routes and requesting uh an update to the ordinance. Um, city staff reviewed uh this map and all of the corresponding language and initiated a comprehensive review um and published uh some updates to this map, which were posted and noticed uh for consideration for the public to look at. Um, a number of those updates are um reflecting the changes in neighborhood character. Um, and staff, I would like to point out, is also recommending that we do a more regular update. Uh, not updating it for any time in 40 years is not sufficient, and there's a lot that changes in that time, and there are continually a lot of changes uh that we expect in the future. So just a quick overview of some of those changes. Uh, the ownership of roadways have changed. Uh, we took on, the city took on in 2017, a number of roadways from the Michigan Department of Transportation. Those are reflected in those uh those changes. Roadway character, anything that came out of locally-driven planning processes, like the Granville Area-Specific Plan. There are also recommended to removal of segments that no longer apply, uh, in which there are roads that just don't exist anymore. Um, also, this is to reflect new routes and roadways. Um, Seward Avenue from Leonard to Butterworth did not exist when this ordinance was originally adopted in 1981, and it's now a primary route for trucks. Also, trying to eliminate gaps in any redundant segments in the network, and also correction and fixing of a lot of typos. Um, so detailed text of all of those recommended changes are included and posted. Um, and I also just want to point out that the amendments of this truck route ordinance were reviewed and recommended for your consideration uh by the Mobile GR Commission, as well as the Vital Streets Oversight Commission. An additional review was conducted at the Neighborhood Association Roundtable Meetings. So with that, that's just a brief overview. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, any uh questions before I open it up for public comment? All right. So if you are calling tonight on this item, you can call 311 or 456-3000 and hit number one and then number three. So I'll turn it over to Daniel. Daniel, do we have anyone in the queue?
We do. We have one caller in the queue. Here they come. Caller, can you please lower the volume on your device?
Yes.
Thank you. You have three minutes. Yep, please state your name and the city in which you live. Your time starts now.
Good evening. Hi, my name is Amy Brower. I'm a resident of Grand Rapids. Um, and also have the pleasure to serve as the Director of the Roosevelt Park Neighborhood Association. I wanted to um call in tonight to follow up um uh uh make follow-up comment in um in regards to our letter of support that we submitted earlier regarding uh our support for the truck route ordinance amendment, specifically uh downgrading Granville Avenue from a truck route to a major route. The heavy stream of commercial traffic up and down Granville Avenue is a noise and air pollution issue, as well as a public safety issue. In a neighborhood-wide survey conducted during our area-specific plan process, nearly 50% of people indicated feeling not safe or somewhat somewhat um safe when thinking of children crossing Granville Avenue in order to get to school. Um, on the public health side, more recent research around COVID-19 has shown a link between air pollution exposure and the increased risk for contracting COVID-19. And we already know that COVID-19 is disproportionately impacting the Latina community, um, of which Roosevelt Park is predominantly Latinx neighborhood. Um, we also recognize that the downgrading of Granville Avenue to a major route that will not completely eliminate all truck traffic, but believe that this is a positive step towards reducing the number of commercial vehicle trips closer to the 300 daily trips is the is the goal set in our area-specific plan. Um, we know that there will need to be support for enforcing this uh change once it happens or hopefully happens, and um would look to your um support in providing resources for that enforcement, but also strongly support a commitment to annually review the traffic conditions on Granville Avenue to consider human health and environmental justice impacts on the neighborhood. Since we submitted our written letter, there have been additional uh businesses, individuals, and organizations who've indicated to us their support and that they also wanted to sign onto as well. So I did just want to recognize those who are also committed and seeing the this improvement for the Roosevelt Park Neighborhood move forward. Um, those included, say, their Peppin Business Owner, PCCom LLC, and Peppin's Properties LLC, YMCA of Great of Greater Grand Rapids, East Hills Council of Neighbors, Fit Kids 360, Health Net of West Michigan, Steve Ortega, Roosevelt Park Resident, Latino Community Coalition, Magdalena S. Rivera, East Hills Resident, NAACP GR, Urban Core Collective, West Michigan Environmental Action Council, West Michigan Sustainable Business Forum. And I'd also just like to recognize that the Plaza Roosevelt Partner Network, who is a is committed as a group of organizations to provide services and proximity to the Plaza Roosevelt site, also submitted a a support statement, which I just did not think had added to the packet. So I wanted to recognize.
Thank you, Ms. Brower. That's three minutes. Thank you.
I'm out of time. Okay. Well, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Thank you, Amy.
Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Hello, my name is Robert Cloy. I live here in Grand Rapids. Uh, I just wanted to kind of uh advocate um for this rerouting of the truck route in Granville. I work over in in Roosevelt Park with a team of four youth. Uh, we have a green team. We I work at a nonprofit called Friends of Grand Rapids Park. Um, I'm over there every day working. I also have the pleasure of working at the I also have the pleasure of working at the community garden just south of the Sesa Chalmers Elementary School as part of the Roosevelt Park Neighborhood Association. I decided to say that, you know, I'm over there all the time, and I'm over there with my youth. Having trucks come by, I mean, you know, in the hundreds of visits per, per day, it's really an effect on the quality of life over there. You know, I'm not even a resident over there, and I still, I still feel that, you know, the kind of, it's... Yeah, it almost feels, I don't want to say like not in my backyard type deal, but when you're looking at like Roosevelt Park neighborhood, and it's a majority Y and X neighborhood, and then you have this, this truck route basically going through the middle of their neighborhood. You know, like I said, it's just kind of a detriment on their, on their quality of life over there. And so, yeah, I'm just here to advocate. I really hope that the commission takes this seriously. And, you know, having a truck route and having an amendment that has been looked at in 40 years, you know, I'm not, I'm not quite sure that that's something that should be continued into the future. You know, as, as the person before me said, a yearly... Looking at this plan yearly, I think would be a great option, and really just taking this seriously. And of any of the commissioners, anybody listening, if you guys aren't familiar with Roosevelt Park neighborhood, I encourage you to, you know, go over and go over to Roosevelt Park. It's a beautiful park. Go over to the community garden south of the school. It's a, it's a really up-and-coming garden. And it could be, you know, a lot better without the constant noise and the constant threat of semi-trucks going down the middle of the neighborhood. So that's all I have to say. Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, Mayor. And I'd like to thank you for my disc.
Thank you, caller.
Thank you. Anyone else in the queue?
One more caller. Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
My name is Siamese Jordan, City of Grand Rapids. And I'm calling in regards to the truck route on Granville Avenue. And not only is it, is it a Latino community, it is a Black community for many, many years. And yes, we have been very negatively impacted by the trucks. I have a business at 701 Granville Avenue for over 20 years, and the trucks tear my corner up, chase the children away. They have problems crossing the street, getting to school there. People like to see the trucks removed from Granville Avenue. And once again, it is a Black community, has been for many, many years. So please stop leaving that up out. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan. There are no more callers in the queue, Mayor.
All right, thank you, Daniel. I'll go ahead and set opportunity for public comment, and this will again be referred to our next meeting. Commissioner Lanier?
Yes, Mayor, I just wanted to quickly say, as many of you are aware, that's like a second home for me, nine months out of the year, where they're frequently, and I have witnessed. So I guess I'm giving public comment. I don't know to the public hearing, but I have witnessed the semi-trucks cutting off curbs. I think if we were to look at the curves that exist on Granville, you will see the damage that's been done. And I think as Ms. Jordan spoke to the point about her own business being impacted by it, many businesses there have been impacted by kind of the semi-trucks coming through that neighborhood. And so I am really happy to hear this presentation today, and gosh, she did a really good job at presenting it. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. And I know this was one of the, the primary issues we heard from the residents and neighbors during the Granville planning process. So I'm happy to see it move forward. All right, thanks, Commissioners. That will now take us to our third public hearing tonight. And this is a City Commission to Hear Appeals on the 2020 Downtown Improvement District Special Assessment Rule, Number 8748. And I see Ms. Paula with us right now, so I will turn it to her first, and then I'll open it up to see if we have public comment related to this item.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Commissioners. At the request of the Downtown Improvement District Board, the Assessor's Office has prepared a special assessment rule, 8748, in accordance with the district's plan, which was adopted by the commission back in May. Property owners were sent notices on June 25th and notified of the assessment amount in the appeal process. The special assessment rule has been open for the public inspection for the required two weeks, starting back in June through today. In addition, a copy of the assessment rule has also been posted to the city website. The Assessor's Office has received four appeals as of today. And then tonight, the City Commission convenes as the board review to hear these appeals of these assessments. And tonight's the final opportunity for those notified to file an appeal of this assessment. The assessor and city attorney will review all appeals. We'll report back to the commission September 15th and requesting the confirmation of the rule. And if confirmed, these assessments will be invoiced starting October 1st. Thank you.
Oh, Daniel, do we have anyone who wants to speak on this appeal?
There are no callers in this queue, Mayor.
Okay, all right. We'll give them just a couple seconds to see if anyone calls in. All right, we'll go ahead and close that public comment period. And that will take us to our last opportunity for public comment. And this is a public comment period where you can call in and speak on any other issue that is not on our agenda tonight. So we'll go ahead and move forward and open up our last opportunity for public comment. And again, if you want to speak to the commissioner or be heard tonight, you can call 456-3000 or 311. Hit the number one and then number five.
Okay, here comes our first caller.
Thanks, Daniel.
Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Thank you. My name is Maggie Smith, and I live in the Third Ward of Grand Rapids. And I'm calling to remind the City Commission to please focus as quickly as possible on defunding, disarming, and disbanding the Grand Rapids Police Department. In particular, the demands that I would like to make on behalf of a large group of people who also believe that it is time for a new system of ensuring our community's freedom, justice, and safety. Those two demands are that the city manager, Mark Washington, should open up budget negotiations now, which are within his purview, not in November. It's clear that there is a huge critical mass in the city. I think probably one of the biggest critical masses in our history, as exhibited by the over 6,000 pieces of communication about this, to open up those budget negotiations now and not wait. In addition, the draft of the Grand Rapids Police Department Strategic Plan should be edited to meet the objective that people like me are asking for and reflect a reduced, not increased budget. We've been very clear, the city has been very clear, the critical mass has been very clear, that the city should defund the police department to 32% as soon as possible. And that should be the start of how we try to create a new system to guarantee that everyone in our city feels free, has access to justice, and has access to safety. Thank you. I'll yield the remainder of my time.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Caller, can you please lower the volume on your device? You're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Hi, my name is Sam Cummings, and I'm a resident of the Second Ward in the City of Grand Rapids. Mayor Bliss and City Commissioners, thanks for your time tonight. As you navigate the current charged political waters, I think we wish to remind us all of what's come before us. The many mayors, commissioners, city managers, business persons, and community volunteers have worked together to build our city of today. We have a lot of things to be thankful for, and indeed have become the envy of many other cities our size. We've done a lot of great things, but we're human, and we clearly now realize that we haven't done everything right, nor have we brought this city to its fullest potential or the full potential of all its residents. But this is a good community, and good communities are always evolving and striving to be better, just as the world is evolving. And sustainable change comes as a result of good decisions made over time. We have good people here who are willing to lend the full measure of their talent and treasure toward making it a better place for all, because it is all our home. We don't have the years of graft and corruption found in many of the struggling cities in the news today, cities that are literally tearing themselves apart. We're different. We've shown ourselves to be different by our collective and admittedly yet incomplete success. We've benefited mightily by the wave of urbanization over the past 20 years, but the new trend, based on recent concerns over cost, density, and safety, is called ex-urbanization. Why would we want to mirror tactics in cities that are participating in this? To literally sign up for losing population and businesses just because it's the loudest narrative of the day? No, this is not a time, this is a time to differentiate ourselves, not to uproot the tree that we've all grown, but to recognize our need for change, lean on our collective trust, and to prune that tree to make its trunk and branches stronger still. That is the Grand Rapids way, not divisive emotional demolition tactics with no clear outcomes. Our city has been in the process of change and evolution to our police department since 2015. We've taken good steps. Now, our chief, Eric Payne, has given us a strategic plan to consider. It's inclusive. It's involved our community, and it promises to continue to do so. Our city manager has endorsed it. This is a strategic plan based on the values of service, equity, integrity, and accountability. The vision of this plan, developed in association with a great deal of community input, is in partnership with our community, we will become the safest mid-sized city and most trusted police department in the United States. Safest and most trusted. That's not looking to be mediocre or acceptable. That's shooting for number one. Okay, let's go, chief. Let's be number one. We can do that. Now is the time to show the country and the world that we are different, that we have a collective vision that has its strengths and challenges, but we're steadfast in the desired results, and therefore confident that we can get there together. We must, and we will hold each other accountable, as long as we all have a hand in the process. If we do so, I'm convinced we can be a significant importer of jobs and talent. We can see growth, prosperity, and beyond.
City clerk, good evening, caller. You're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, I have heard that the police department has already been defunded $2.5 billion this latest fiscal round, and I just wanted to know if we could get a report on where that money came from. If you put $130,000 to each officer for a line item, that's 19 officers that we've defunded. And if the officers haven't been laid off, is that coming from training, equipment? I'd like to know where that came from. Also, there seems to be in this strategic plan or some of the news reports I heard today, an apology for inequality of enforcement. I don't understand that. That goes in direct diametric composition to cities like Baltimore, who are moving into microzones and sending police into their most violent crime-ridden areas. I don't know why people wouldn't want that. I heard a couple of the commissioners talk today about investment in minority communities and bringing in businesses, and I couldn't be more supportive than that. However, if in the morning before work, these people come in and there's 40, 50, 60 fired shell casings in the street in front of their business, I just don't see people wanting to financially or invest in personnel in such a manner. So I don't think the inequality of enforcement, it should be the equality of enforcement over criminal behavior. And if we have that going on, I care about those neighborhoods. We need to act on it, not fail from it. The other thing I would like to say is that I think I'd like to see the mayor more involved. She was pretty critical on handcuffing policies of young kids, and it was always a review, and it was always sending it back for more work. If you're the leader of the city, stand up front, take accountability for that, and tell us what your plan is. It's just easy to take potshots at a, at a chief that's working within certain amount of a lot. It'd be nice to have the officers safely and in numbers go into these intersections where 500 people nightly take it and start shooting off rounds in the middle of the city. And those are parents who supposedly are role models for our kids that are seeing that type of activity. And so I'm against defunding the police department, because I don't think you can make it safe with less police officers. And I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you, caller. Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Yes, hi, this is Becky, and I'm calling from Grand Rapids. And is this the right opportunity now to address the defunding the police?
Yes, it is. Go ahead.
Thank you very much. Thank you for taking the call again. I haven't changed my mind since the last time. And yes, we are so adamantly opposed to any idea or any effort to defund our police. You know, bless their hearts, they were out there the other day in the townhouses where we lived. There was a child who had gone missing, and there were probably four to five policemen here, and they handled it beautifully. They were so kind to the folks that had the missing child. The child was recovered. We were so grateful for that. But I watched them as they, as we were all desperately looking for this child, and these policemen were absolutely wonderful. And I was just thinking, what if those folks could not have called and gotten the right people to come out and help them? And it once again just affirmed my confidence in them. You know, not, not any entity here, any place in this world are we going to have 100% perfect people. Even in, even on your board there, there's not going to be, you know, there's, there's always a bad egg somewhere. But we don't want to get rid of you, because you're working for us, and we need you. And so why in the world would we ever want to defund our police? Why in the world? Please, please, we're desperate for any, for you to throw that idea right out the window. Thank you for your time. We appreciate all of you, and God bless you. Bye now.
Thank you, caller. Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
I appreciate your time. My name's Mark Heisinger from Kelowna. In regards to defunding the police, I just think it's completely asinine. I don't know where that idea even came from. If you look at Portland or Minneapolis, or what happened downtown two months ago. Not only that, which would totally destroy any kind of tourism, which Grand Rapids is a hotspot on the rise, but I'm not going to send my wife and kids downtown to an event. If crime is up, like it's going up in these cities that are, you know, trying this. I mean, it's a perfect precursor to what's to come if this is followed through with defunding the police and all that. I just think it's totally crazy and asinine. So that's what I wanted to say. I just want to voice my opinion. I'm not in the City of Grand Rapids, but I like downtown. I like the atmosphere, and to, to think that taking away or trying to save a million bucks a year out of the, out of the budget is going to do anything. It's just going to kill. You're going to lose five times that in, in tourism. So that's all I want to say. Appreciate your time, and I hope you make the right decision on all that. So thanks, and have a good night.
Thank you, caller. Caller, can you please lower the volume on your device? You have three minutes. Please state your name and the city in which you live. Your time starts now.
Hi, my name is Matthew. I live in Grand Rapids. I just was calling in to add my voice to the people who are calling to defund the police here in Grand Rapids. And I would also ask that the budget be discussed with Mark Washington now, not in November. I'm also extremely disappointed to hear the mobilization of the Voice of the Badge Group and just the, the untruths that they're, that they're spreading and calling in. and just the, the untruths that they're, that they're spreading and calling in. And it's just really disappointing to, you know, to see that, that people, that these voices' reaction, that they're on the case and that they, that, that they are closing ranks around the police who need to be held accountable. So yeah, we know that, that police do not prevent crime. The research is, is out there and if people really wanted to, to see that, they, they could. And, and I just want to say, like, we need to be funding services that prevent the underlying causes of crime. And, and the police do not play a role in that. This way of doing things is extremely inefficient and not to mention brutal. So I, that's pretty much concludes what I wanted to say. I yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you, caller. Caller, you're on with the city commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Jason Vogel, Grand Rapids, Michigan. Thank you for your time. I think it is absurd, absurd to consider defending any police department, much less the Grand Rapids Police Department, for which I depend on to protect and serve my community. It is clear that crime rates will explode without a dominant police presence. Those most vulnerable, namely the poor, the African-American and the immigrant community, have the most to lose by an increase in crime caused by the reduction in patrols and arrests of criminal subjects. Please consider the far-reaching negative consequences of defunding our vital Grand Rapids Police Department. Thank you.
Thank you, caller. Caller, you're on with the city commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Hi, my name is Tanner. I live in the city of Wyoming. Firstly, I'd like to call in city manager Washington to open budget negotiations now rather than in November. Obviously, the public demand is there right now. Like a previous caller said, we're at a critical mass at this point where, you know, the citizens are demanding action. You know, we, we're ready now to see change, that we've seen enough violence as it is. We're not wanting to see a George Floyd incident in our streets before we do something because we know that even if we do see that, we won't do anything about it, just the way that most cities never do anything about it. We don't want to act in a reactionary way. Anyway, the second thing I wanted to say is, after seeing the video of the protester who was shot with a canister at close range on May 30th in the face after being pepper sprayed, I don't really have a lot of confidence in any plan of action that was drafted by the police department that didn't press charges or punish him in any way. So I don't know why we should think that anything that Chief Payne is saying will be executed in good faith. You know, he talked about chokeholds and shooting at moving cars will be banned except for in situations where deadly force is authorized. Well, one, he doesn't, he doesn't enforce the rules we have now. We already have a rule that you can't shoot a protester in the face with a canister, but that still happened and they weren't punished for it. And secondly, saying except where deadly force is authorized, completely negates the entire point of, it's, it's admitting that at this point in time, those things are authorized by deadly force isn't, which is very broken. It's not even progress. It's not even progress to say that getting rid of that is an improvement because that's so horrifically violent and awful. And then the other thing I wanted to say is that the homeless outreach team will not do anything to improve the material conditions of homeless people. It won't help them get off the street. It won't help them get into homes. It won't keep them safe from the pandemic. And as a faction of the police department, the police can't be trusted to administer that. If we're going to do, and I want to be clear, I, I think a homeless outreach team is a good idea in theory, and I definitely think that the mental and behavioral team is a good idea in theory, but it needs to be a separate department from the police department. It needs to be dispatched by 911, the same way that the fire department or the ambulances are, because if we're not cutting police personnel and there was nothing in Payne's plan to cut personnel or funding, then a cop, somebody with a gun is going to show up every time that there is a situation where the mental and behavioral team or the homeless outreach team should be responding in any way. So all it is, is another person that'll be at these crimes in addition to a police officer with a gun, which is not, that's not progress. We need to get cops out of these situations, anyway. So.
Thank you, caller. That's three minutes. Thank you. Caller, can you please lower the volume on your device?
Hello?
Hi, can you lower the volume on your device? Thank you. Yes. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Okay, my name is John Torres. I live in Grand Rapids, Michigan. I have a business in Grand Rapids, Michigan. I'm currently sitting at Johnny Brand's Restaurant on Leonard Street with several business owners. I thought they're actually, the meeting was here this, tonight, but apparently it's, it's beyond my technical support program here, but I'm definitely against defunding the police. I want to go on record for that. Business owner on Leonard, on the west side, been here for 20 some years, and if we're going to defund anybody, I, I'd like to defund the governor's office.
We're not, we're not going to defund the police.
Right. Yep, I'm with several people, actually black and white, that don't understand the situation.
I do understand. It makes no sense to defund the police.
It makes no sense. Yep, it makes no sense at all. I don't need three minutes to explain because there, there's just no reason for this. No reason at all. If you defund the police, who protects you?
Are you yielding your time, caller?
I am.
Thank you, caller. Have a good night.
Goodbye, John.
Caller, you're on with the city commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. Your time starts now.
My name is Joseph Krasinski on the Grand Rapids, Michigan. I own properties at 670 Leonard and 666 Leonard and 1144 Davis on the west side of Grand Rapids. I definitely do not want to defund the police. I have had feelings with the police most positive, and I've been on the other side of the law myself. I've always been treated with respect. And, and just to make a comment about our police not being trained properly, or they think we need some kind of social workers or something to take the place of the police or take some of the funding towards a social worker. I, my personal experience, Joseph Krasinski, they know who I am, have had experience in this area. Our police officers are very well-trained in Grand Rapids to deal with social issues and, and dealing with domestic issues and dealing with, we, we have one of the best police departments, as far as I know, talking to other friends, family, and people that I know from other cities. We have a very well-trained, very, very, very intelligent police department as far as dealing with domestic issues, as far as dealing with violent issues, as far, as far as dealing with medical issues and calling the right people in and everything. We do not need to defund our police department. We need to maybe reinforce and further fund our police department. I don't even think they need further training. I really, my personal experience is that they are very well-trained. They listen, they pay attention, they, they know how to separate people, talk to people, deal with people. I'm on the west side of Grand Rapids, it's a high-crime area. I see how they deal with people. We have a fantastic police department. We do not need to defund them. We need to support them. And if anything, we need to give them more money, more funding. We do not need to split them up into factions or get some other, you know, you want to send some personnel, a mental health worker or something, certain thing, how are you going to divide this? How are you going to decide who to send? You're going to send some young person with no experience with dealing with certain situations to a domestic situation, and it becomes violent. What do they do then? Then they're going to have to call the police. Why not just send the police in the first place that already have those skills along with the ability to handle the situation forcefully or whatever is called for? Sorry if I'm a little long-winded, that's my statement.
Thank you, caller. Caller, you're on with the city commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Good evening, city commission. My name is Paige Mas, and I'm within the city of Grand Rapids on the southeast side. I'm addressing the city commission today on the proposed restructuring of the Grand Rapids Police Department. Today, we stand on the verge of an unprecedented violent crime spike across this nation. In Grand Rapids alone, not only violent, gun-related crimes are increasing, but also petty theft crime and vandalism. I've had my car broken into twice within the past year, four neighbors moved, and bordered multiple shootings within the blocks from my very home. Volume of our officers are responding to are doubling, referencing the 2017 to 2018 Grand Rapids Police Department annual reports, which the numbers have been sent on the rise. Crime is increasing, call volume is doubling, and the Grand Rapids Police Department is half-staffed in relationship to the national average, according to the FBI statistics metric used, which is the number of police officers per 1,000 residents. So to make this concise, crime is increasing, call volumes are doubling, and our street officers are currently half-staffed. Our streets are becoming more unsafe by the day while our, and law under attack. Police officers are being handcuffed by city officials, our very own administration and budgets, while radical activist groups and their political allies are calling to defund the police, where protests have given way to gang-related violence and lawlessness. We need to address the budget distribution and that of the third ward if we want actual change, for I feel the socioeconomic disparities of those who reside within the third ward and that of the other two wards have given way for such crimes to take place. I urge you to listen to the police live scanners, walk the borders of Franklin Street southeast, and give effort into understanding the city you've been elected to service. I adamantly recommend that to fund the department with the infrastructure and resources it needs to at a minimum meet the federal national average standard, but also to provide the tools and resources and bodies we need and our very own city's law enforcement department to increase the safety of our community and the citizens within. I am a citizen who cares, member of Voice for the Badge, Paige Mas. Thank you so much for your time, commission. Have a good evening.
Thank you, caller. Caller, you're on with the city commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
All right, yeah. My name's Leslie from Grand Rapids. Yeah, I find it curious that it's okay to excuse riot police, shooting first inciting riots and, you know, you know, brutalizing families, but police, police actually in the community rather than investing in the community. What next, green light like Detroit with Grand Rapids, Michigan? How ridiculous. Pain and bliss, get tear gas arrested for some perspective. Free the protesters, Black Lives Matter, fuck you, yielding my time.
Daniel, I'm going to pause a minute and I'm going to ask people to not use derogatory language and be respectful of our, our public comment period.
Yes, thank you, mayor. Caller, you're on with the city commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. Your time starts now. You have three minutes.
Hello, this is Nixler Cooper. I was quite startled this morning with what I saw, having to be on Facebook and you saw a lot of parties, and I'm watching you, a Facebook or a meeting that you're having Tuesday morning, where you have to vote on something by four to have it be on the ballot in November. And it was a petition that this group, who says they're nonpartisan, and also worked to implement the, to implement the term. At any rate, that group had a petition going, it was corrupted by COVID, so they approached you, asking you, or whoever did, to approve it for the November ballot using the COVID excuse. So I think that it still needs to go through the, the period of democracy, even if the signatures were gathered online, much like our meetings are now online. I'm also wondering why then that the other petition having to, with representation at the city level wasn't considered to be put on the ballot too, as that proposal had a lot of people I knew really willing to circulate petitions and then we couldn't. So if you're going to put that one on, I suggest we put the other one on too. There's no need to up the voter register, the voting on city elections if the residents aren't informed. If we do it at the time the presidentials and everything else are happening, we'll get more voters, but that doesn't mean that they're going to be informed and have met all of the commissioners. I personally would love to see the one pass where we have more representation because we have more commissioners and more wards, so that more voice is left mine, for instance. We've been talking about housing for three years. Now, that's all I got for this amount of time, so I'm going to talk about defunding the police. The funding doesn't mean take away the police, it doesn't mean no money for police, doesn't mean starve them. It means not giving almost 39% of the whole city budget while people don't have a place to live. You're, you're putting up things to harm the homeless. The homeless get charged by police. They don't care about their rights. You're, you're shoving them aside. I tried to deliver milk to the place on Fuller that was giving at least lunches, and they're not even like that anymore. You're pushing that way, you're saying, don't give them lunches at Hattaway, but you're not doing anything about it. And then you're soft-shut about crime. You're the ones that aren't putting in housing at affordable rates so that people can have stable neighborhoods because they have stable housing. And in stable neighborhoods, people look out for each other and the cops don't have to.
That's three, that's three minutes, Ms. Cooper. Caller, you're on with the city commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Hi, my name is Kay McAlpine, and I live on the west side of Grand Rapids. I don't think that the city is really listening to what anyone has been saying in Grand Rapids, and I mean those really in Grand Rapids, not people from suburbs outside the city or wealthy business owners who might do some operations here, but you know they drive home with their income to rich suburbs like Rockford. I'm not talking about those people. They don't vote for you. I do. You report to me. You're not listening. We want the police defunded, disarmed, and dismantled. This strategic plan is basically the opposite of that. You're spitting in the face of everyone who sent those 6,000-plus emails urging you to defund. The institution of police is one of violence and racism. Public safety will only really happen if the needs of the community are really met. The community needs housing, education, healthcare, and other public services before it needs more violence. Please listen to us. We're going to keep making the demands that you defund the GRPD. Thank you. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you, caller. Caller, you're on with the city commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Hello, buenas tardes. My name is Marisol Rodriguez, and I am a longtime Grand Rapids resident. And tonight, I'm calling on behalf of myself and my family and many, many Grand Rapids residents that are also Latinos and Hispanics who don't feel comfortable calling but are also two, three decades Grand Rapids residents. And we want to show our support for our Grand Rapids police and our policia, and we just want to thank you for all you do. And commissioners, as city leaders, we want to urge you to please stand behind our police. And there are many Black and Hispanic, Asian, whatever, police officers that I feel like we're turning our back on right now if we don't support them. While we do need more minority police officers, we have to support the ones that we have, and we know there's many good ones that protect our city. And commissioners, I know that if you think about what a situation would be like if you defunded them or cut their budget with up to 80 less officers and you needed them, I mean, how unsafe would you feel? Many of us residents, a lot of Latinos, tax-paying residents that put so much into our economy were fearful of what that would look like. And, you know, it's sad to see Commissioner Sassi not support her very own people. We should be proud of you, but we're not, and it's really sad, and I mean that with the most respect. So again, commissioners, as city leaders, I please urge you, and I thank you on behalf of many Latinos and Hispanics and minorities in the city of Grand Rapids. So thank you. And again, Grand Rapids police, thank you so much for all we, for all you do. Want you to know from the bottom of my heart, there's more of us that support you than those that don't. So thank you, and everybody be safe and stay healthy.
Thank you, caller. Thank you, caller. Caller, you're on with the city commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Go ahead, caller.
Thank you. My name is Emma Jones, and I live in Grand Rapids, on the west side. I'm a Spanish person, and I would translate myself. Mi nombre es Emma Lo, y yo vivo en el norte, este lado de la ciudad. Me estoy llamando porque la comunidad inmigrante, especialmente la indocumentada, tiene miedo de llegar a la policía porque representa una posible separación de familia. También representa que los crímenes como la violencia doméstica han sido no reportados por la misma miedo a interactuar con la policía. Entonces, se está pidiendo que la policía le quiten fondos para que se use en programas que sean más para la comunidad, para que haya más seguridad, pero en un programa de comunidad, no la policía. So I'm calling because immigrants communities is afraid to call the police, especially to report crimes. And most prevalent is domestic violence. So we don't trust the police because it could represent a separation. So I'm calling to ask the commission to defund the police and allocate those fundings towards the community's programs that can help immigrants, especially undocumented, to be more aware on services and programs that can help report crimes. And it's not through police, but through programs. They are especially for people, caller, and immigrants. Thank you.
Thank you, caller. Caller, you're on with the city commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Myra Martina, 16 Greig Street.
Go ahead.
Hi, how's everybody doing? Oh, you can't answer me, right? Okay, so I had a few concerns about this proposal on the defunding of the GRPD. I'm a business owner, and I'm gonna go really quick because I only have three minutes. So if I go too fast, just let me know. Well, I'm concerned because I've heard of it in other states, and I know New York, you know, they've tried it, and the crime rate went up about 400%. And I know people that live there, and they're like begging for the police to come back, you know? So it's a mess over there. And also, I spoke to some of my friends and family that own a lot of businesses, up and down division, which is, you know, a very, they have a really high crime rate in that area. And, you know, they have supermarkets and all kinds of businesses there. And I was a bit surprised to learn that nobody has at least, well, really, nobody has reached out to the owners or anything, and they don't know anything about this. And I know this is gonna impact them directly. It's gonna impact us. So, I mean, they help with, I mean, if the police help keep in that area our crime rate down. And so at least with the break-ins, it'd rather be residential, the businesses, the vehicles, the theft in the stores, the prostitution, the drunken fights, the bar fights, the drugs, the drug dealing, you know, the drug addicts, you know what I mean? So if there's nobody patrolling that area, you know, then what's gonna happen to my business? If people keep breaking in, you know what I mean? I had four break-ins in one year, you know, alone. And that was on 2850, you know, on Division. And that's one building that has like about 30 or 40 vendors, you know what I mean? And so all those vendors pay taxes, you know what I mean? And so that's again, you know, with this whole COVID thing, you know, we already had businesses that were shutting down. So including myself, I was even thinking of, because I have a business, a building that I have a tenant for, they're off of Division, on 1627 Division, and a guy that has a supermarket in front of me, you know what I mean? And, I mean, it's millions of dollars that you lose in a couple of years, you know what I mean? So it's just like, well, what are we gonna do? I mean, you get to a point where you don't know if you're gonna close your business or not. So again, those are tax dollars, you know, that Roland is counting on.
That's three minutes.
Are my three minutes up? Okay.
Thank you. Caller, you're on with the city commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Thank you. My name is David Van Houten, and I'm a lifelong resident of the city of Grand Rapids. And I am speaking to the city commission and the mayor in opposition of defunding our fine police department. Had I known that my own city commissioners would be pushing an anti-police socialist agenda and backing the loud few instead of doing what they were elected to do and providing for my safety here, I would have never voted for them. That wasn't mentioned while they were campaigning, though. So now we know. We don't need to defund our police department. We need to increase the funding of our police department. We almost had our city torn down by these rioters, and somehow, my city commission wants to reduce the budget of my police department instead of increase it. Obviously, there's some wrong thinking there. I can assure you that myself and my neighbors are sitting around wondering just what is going on. We support the blue. We always have in my neighborhood. It's a neighborhood that my mayor lives in. And I'm just appalled at the lack of support that my city commission is giving the Grand Rapids Police Department and the fine officers that serve on that department. I want to also tell you that I know the reality of the calls for service in Grand Rapids and how many calls wait for a police officer to respond. It'd be irresponsible to reduce the staffing of our police department, knowing that domestic assault calls, crimes in progress. I haven't seen a police officer in my neighborhood in years. What are you gonna, I'm just appalled by what is going on, and I can't figure out when medical units won't go into the scene until it's been made safe, how we're gonna have enough people to respond and make sure that these other units, that these units can operate when the fire department won't go in on a medical emergency without a police officer there to make the scene safe? Where are these police officers gonna come from? Are we gonna haul them out of another city? I don't get it. So I want to tell you that my neighbors and I are organizing, if this agenda continues, that we're gonna be remembering this come the next election. But besides that, we're gonna be organizing.
Thank you. Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Caller, you're on with the city commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Thank you. Johnny Brand Senior, Grand Rapids business owner, Wyoming, Stewart, Grandville, Michigan, proud president of the Voice for the Badge. I heard recently that Commissioner Yasi says that defunding is most likely not gonna occur. This is fantastic news. I think it was very reckless to even bring that up. We are short police officers currently, and the city would be so unsafe. And I really hope that you realize, Commissioner Jones, Commissioner Repart, and Commissioner Yasi, that your votes affect the entire city of Grand Rapids, and the entire city of Grand Rapids overwhelmingly would not want our police to be funded. And that should be a valid initiative, because let the people speak, and when they speak, it'll overwhelmingly be no to defunding. But I'm happy to hear that that's not gonna be happening. I understand there's some reallocations that being done. I know that they defended the police already, $500,000 approximately to go to the oversight of police and fire department. I'm sure it was good that will be done with that, although the $500,000 reallocation of that money, along with a million dollars that they were already defunded because of CD-19, understandable. Our city would be a wreck. We would be an unsafe city if the funding occurred. Actually, we need additional officers for this city to be safe. I have articles approved that additional officers on the streets patrolling, working, reduces crime. So I places a threat for what they do, and they're out there every day for us risking their lives. I don't think people understand that they risk their lives, they protect and serve, they will be there for you if you need them, and will die for you if they have to. They have PTSD, post-traumatic stress, because they see the worst of the worst. I love our PD. I think they're so vital. I think they're brave. I think they proved that as they stood against the violence and the riots. They restrained themselves and stood bravely protecting the city that they were being attacked for. I just would like to say that money can be reallocated for the needs in their city, which I believe in, doing the things, but get it from somewhere else in the budget. There's plenty of fat in that budget. Reprioritize for public safety, for helping in our city, and take the money from there, not from the police department that is out there protecting, serving the entire city of Grand Rapids. And the morale of our police department is horrible. I assume oversight of police and fire position, Brandon Davis, part of, one of the integral parts of his job is to have a culture and high morale for the police. It's the worst it's ever been, that ever been. And so job not well done on that. And it's so important. I'm disappointed that this position has had this effect on our police in a negative way. I think it's very important. And did you know that more officers killed by suicide in the last two years than by criminality?
Thank you, caller. That's three minutes.
Thank you very much.
Caller, you're on with the city commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Hi, my name is Deirdre Collins, and I live in the third ward. I am calling to add my voice to defunding the police. And it's not true that crime goes up when police are when police are cut. It's true that crime increases when social services are cut. So I think that that money needs to be reallocated to social services. We have a terrifically militarized police department, and the money that's there, it needs to be cut. So that's why I'm calling, and I'm just, I'm just really upset that everybody is in so much fear that they think that the police are keeping them safe, and that's just not true. And anyway, I am in support of defunding the police, and I'm in support of trying something different, because what we have now is just not working. Thank you very much. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you, caller. Caller, you're on with the city commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Yeah, hi, my name's Eric. I'm from Grand Rapids. Can you hear me?
I can. Go ahead, caller.
Okay, so I wanted to, I got to sit through the meeting earlier this afternoon, and I got to see the police metric dashboard, which I thought was really interesting. One thing, some data points that I noticed, though, were that, you know, they had external and internal complaints. And I noticed that a large proportion of the external complaints were administratively closed. So I'm not sure what that means. I'd like to hear more about that. I also saw that a large portion of, well, if you look at the internal complaints, they're about 80% sustained, whereas with external complaints, there's only about 10% to 20% sustained. So that seemed a little off to me. And I'd also like to be able to actually see which officer is associated with which complaint. Because now, you know, the issue that we saw with Floyd was that there was a single officer who had way too many complaints. We need to be able to see if that happens. What else? Let's see. So a lot of people have been talking about the budget. I also agree that the police department should be proposing a cuts. So I think it was Seattle who had their department propose, you know, how they could cut 50% of their spending. Another issue is that a lot of the anti-defund people are making is that they're correlating a reduction in budget with a reduction in policing. I don't think this is correct, and actually, this can't be the case. What we want is a reduction in funding with an increase in the quality of policing. The quality of policing now, well, the system needs to change drastically. So what we're asking for is a 32%, well, a proposal to get 32% of the budget. And if anything, policing should, the quality of policing should increase. So this may sound impossible, but this is the reality of the situation in which we now live. If the police can't figure out a way to do this, then I think we need to find new people who can. In my opinion, this is their penance for operating a racist and overly militaristic organization for over 100 years. So once again, we shouldn't correlate a reduction in police funding with a reduction in the quality of policing. This is actually, it should be negatively correlated. We want a reduction in funding with an improved new policing system. I guess one other comment.
Thank you, caller. That's three minutes. That's three minutes. Thank you. Caller, you're on with the city commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Yes, this is Commissioner Robert S. Womack, and I'm outside here in the 49507. And I want to say first of all to everybody that called in, Black Lives Matter, yes, Black Lives Matter. But don't defund the police, reform the police. Do not defund the police, reform the police. We should not have to defund any of the vital services that our community needs, like the police, fire, and our emergency workers that provide vital services, and they should be supported to the fullest. Whoever said that social workers need to step in to stop the violence really don't understand that our neighborhood, when you're shot, some people are looking at this on TV or studying it, and I give so much support to those that are so concerned about what's going on in the neighborhood, because that's a good thing, or nobody would be talking about it. So I'm not here to battle those that say, "Don't defun," that I say, "Defund the police," but I'm here to really educate them. In our neighborhood, when you're shot, nobody comes in, social workers, ambulance, until the police secure the scene. That's one of the reasons I say, "Don't defund the police, reform the police." We're on route to surpass the highest year of murder rates in the city of Grand Rapids. And when you live here in the 49507, there's shooting every day. Seventeen cars stolen the last week. Cars are being stolen left and right. People think it's the purge, and we ain't going for that. We need more minority policing, so that means we need more money to hire more police. We need better training. We need mandatory real bias training for the police, which Governor Whitmore is doing statewide for those employees. That's gonna take money. We need to find all the bad police. I've been on the forefront of calling for some of them to be fired. I've been part of successful campaigns to get them fired. There's other police who have stepped up and even told on some of those. And I know how bad some of the bad ones are, and like, no one's more angrier at the bad ones than me. But when you destroy the whole police department, you destroy the whole city. Don't defund the police, reform the police. The police shouldn't have to worry about politicians and rear rats and people taking their jobs when they're out there. They need to worry about keeping this community safe. Two girls were shot last week, 14-year-old, one that was elementary age. This is what, we've got crime, and we need the police, but we need to reform the police. Like I said, I'm not here to put anyone down. I'm just here to say, we got more options. There is money to, for programs for minorities to put us up against the police and say, "We gotta defund the police." There is money to pro, for programs for minorities to put us up against the police and say, we gotta defund the police to take care of our, our programs and forget that we live in the richest country on the planet Earth. That is terrible. Uh, this Commissioner Robert.
Thank you, Commissioner.
One of the biggest critics saying, don't you fund the police, reform the police.
Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Hi, my name is Hillary. I've been a resident in Grand Rapids for the past ten years. Um, I'm calling to support uh defunding for the police as well. And I think, you know, this conversation has been going on for over two months. We've had people calling in on both sides of the argument. Um, I think it's time to actually put this on the agenda. Um, and I would like to see Mark Washington open up a budget negotiation before November. I know this can happen at any time during the year. There is no need to wait for November. Um, I also want to make a comment on the police's strategic plan. My impression from it was that everything they would need to do requires more funding, and it will insert more police officers into situations they are not equipped to handle. Um, the strategic plan has completely ignored what the, what everyone has been wanting to talk about over the past few months. Um, and it still relies on a carceral method of public safety. Um, and I, I just have a lot of questions about it, too. I know we can provide feedback on the city's website, but I'd like to see some public information about Network 180's recommendations to the city and to GRPD. I would also like to propose that the mental and behavioral health team, data, yeah, excuse me, analytics, community assistance, victim advocacy, and restorative justice team be removed from the GRPD portion of the budget and have their own portion in the general operating fund. I don't think that we need to add more things to the police department. I think they should be independent of the police department. Um, that's, that's really all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you, caller. Caller, you're on. Can you lower the volume on your device, please?
We need to add more pay for the police department. I think they should be independent of the police department.
Hi, you're on with the City Commission. Your time starts now. Hello, caller.
Yep.
Yep. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Go ahead.
Is that better?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. So I'm calling as, my name is Madeline Smith. I live in Grand Rapids, and I'm calling as part of the large group demanding that City Manager Mark Washington opens up budget negotiations now, not in November. And um, we need to see that the police budget is reduced, not increased, in the future. Um, it's budget season right now, and you guys are literally the ones who get to pick what's happening. We're at a pivotal point where we need you to choose to invest in the community. I don't understand why we wouldn't make that choice when we can do it. Um, how does a police department spending thirty million plus dollars on prowling streets, looking for people to sign, help make Grand Rapids be a better city in 2021? Who will you choose to protect? Over half of GRPD's budget historically goes toward patrolling, not toward processing rape kits, not toward investigation. Those tasks, to them, are secondary to prowling through low-income neighborhoods, looking for people, children, to harass. GRPD has and will continue to commit brutality against black citizens. As recently as May, a sleeping man was dragged out of his car by GRPD and beaten in the streets. How did this prevent crime? Earlier callers commented that their car was broken into, or maybe something got vandalized, so we need cops. If GRPD could not stop those things from happening with a fifty-five million dollar budget and military gear, I promise they will never be able to. You call them after the fact, right? And they come over an hour later and write it down, and then you never hear back? It's just a waste of money. They are not understaffed. They are militarized. They have the resources of a small army. Education in Grand Rapids is understaffed and underfunded. During COVID-19, a crisis of our time, when we should be looking for creative ways to fund online learning, feed the one-in-four food insecure children in Kent County, are we really preparing to spend over fifty-five million dollars on riot gear and overtime for the GRPD? I have to believe that you will listen and understand just how many people have to go without to fund this violent, wasteful punitive institution. And knowing that black people are dying at a wildly disproportionate rate from COVID-19, it's truly upsetting to think that the winning plan for the budget is that the ward with the highest black population should get the least amount of investment from the city, and the GRPD will get more money for tear gas to use on non-violent protesters protesting their brutality. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you, caller. Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Hi, my name is Mark. I'm from Grand Rapids. Um, you know, I said, I said already before, you cannot defund the police. That's a, that's a bad move. You know, you want some defun, just, just, just defund Planned Parenthood or something. You know, that, that makes, should be allocated to, to anything, to anything involving the community. Now, I, I heard about this, 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 this new plan, you know, involving, involving reshaping of policing. But there was one, there's one thing that, that no, no, nothing was said about it. Where are the precincts? The precincts should have been included in there. You know, if, 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 if you want them out in the neighborhood and not in the community, you gotta have the precincts. That's, that's, that's the one thing that should, that should be included, in, included in all of this. You cannot have a central location calling people all out on patrol, and, and, and it's a call, they gotta go all the way out to a call that might be way, way out, way, way out, near the city limits. You know, and, you know, you have to have the precincts. The precincts are vital for, 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 for this to work. If not, it shouldn't happen. You know, the precincts have to be there. You can get it done. You can get it done. But more importantly, you gotta get it done. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, caller. Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, caller.
Uh, and, and, and your, your, your voice is, your, is going in and out, just FYI.
Oh, my apologies. Go ahead, caller.
Uh-huh. My name is Dane Gates. I am a resident of Baxter Neighborhood in the Third Ward. Good evening, Mayor Bliss, City Commissioner, City Manager Washington, and city staff. Thank you for your labor in drafting current city budget. Events of death of George Floyd, Breonna Taylor, public protests, and national outcry emphasize the importance of defunding the Grand Rapids Police Department from thirty-nine percent to thirty-two percent of city budget. Priorities are determined based on commitment and investment. Now is the time for community investment of those devastated by police policies and practices. Our city is at risk of replacing, uh, I'm sorry, of repeating history, responding with incremental and indecisive action. Each day of delay increases possibility of Grand Rapids residents reacting to deprivation and desperation. More police on the street will not reduce crime. Building trust with community and police accountability reduces crime. I have a concern regarding City Manager Mark Washington's responsibility of setting city commission agenda, being a potential conflict of interest to responsible, inclusive, meaningful city, citizen engagement process. Also would consider it an expectation that the City Manager, Mark Washington, and City Attorney Anita Hitchcock are competent to define city commission protocol, eliminating the need to wait until November to discuss the important matter of defunding Grand Rapids Police Department from thirty-nine percent to thirty-two percent of the city budget. Bakes the chief paying for the release of the three-year strategic plan. A more timely release before presenting to the city commission would be helpful to city residents. The greatest contributor to crime is poverty. Until the systematic root cause is addressed, change is challenged. I also ask that city funds be made available to residents past due on rent to aid in providing housing stability now that the moratorium on, on eviction is lifted. I believe Grand Rapids is a city capable of turning an obstacle into an opportunity for change. Thank you.
Thank you, caller. Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Thank you. Um, my name is Annie Rannenberg. I'm a resident of Grand Rapids. Um, I'm actually out of the state right now, but I knew that today the strategic plan was going to be released. Um, and I knew that I needed to speak about something. Um, I want to say our city is such an amazing and vibrant one, all of the neighborhood developments and initiatives. And recreating a police force means nothing, however, if people in our city don't feel safe, and if people who are visiting our city don't feel safe. Um, other speech tonight about defunding the police makes the process sound so negative, but um I think that's just a play on words. Uh, we have such a great opportunity now to use this conversation around the topic to decide as a city how we reallocate funds, um, to implement a program, uh, anti-violence program that not only helps the residents, but also helps the police by preventing and intervening before there are problems. Um, and to me, that is the Cure Violence Program. Um, Grand Rapids has been familiar with this program for years. Some of the smartest and most decent people I have met in Grand Rapids have been advocating for this program for years. Um, the research and evidence speaks for itself. Um, by preventing problems before they happen, it's an absolute win-win for the city and for the people calling for change. Uh, with that being said, the events of May 30th in downtown Grand Rapids did not happen in a vacuum, and it should not be a surprise. There's such an opportunity here to help our city heal itself. And in my opinion, that's the Cure Violence Program. Um, I think that we should utilize the amazing training that they will provide and the support of so many community partners who have advocated for this. Thank you so much, and I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you, caller. Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Hi, my name's Michelle Truskowski. I'm with Grand Rapids United Progressive, and I'm calling to ask to defund the police department. Um, and I want to quote an article from the Daily Beast. Um, there's several articles on, about white supremacy, um, and white supremacists infiltrating the police department. And this one, uh, excuse me, it states, um, from Samuel Jones, professor of law at John Marshall School of Law in Chicago. And it's stating that the problem is worse now than it's ever been, referring back to a 2006 article. Um, and, and that's, uh, let me get my notes here. There was an internal FBI report in 2006 entitled White Supremacist Infiltration in Law Enforcement. And they're talking about, um, how, um, excuse me, I lost my place here, I'm sorry. Within our criminal and justice, criminal justice system, um, they're infiltrating as prosecutors, police officers, investigators, medical examiners, and judges according to their own literature. And so when we talk about police brutality and police profiling of black people, we need to recognize this as a systemic problem and address it accordingly. Also, I wanted to ask the City Manager, Mark Washington, why we're waiting to start the budget negotiations until November, because we need to start them right now. And I'm also asking the strategic, strategic plan to be edited in accordance with objectives that reflect the reduced, not an increased budget. Thank you very much.
Thank you, caller. Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Can you lower the volume on your device, please?
Yeah.
You have three minutes. Please state your name and the city in which you live. Your time starts now.
Hello, my name is Hannah Mygo. I live in Grand Rapids, Third Ward. Um, I'm calling in about, um, defunding the Grand Rapids Police Department and reopening, um, negotiations on the city budget, um, before November. Um, I recently saw that Grand Rapids Public Schools had a budget cut of about ten million dollars, um, in June, at the same time that the public is calling for, um, reallocation of funds from the police department, um, which is really unacceptable to see public education, which is a tool that's been proven to decrease crime, um, losing funding at the same time that the strategic plan is being released, um, and basically asking for more funding to policing. Um, that's just really discouraging to see, um, public education losing funding at this time, uh, when there's a great opportunity, as was just stated, to reopen that budget, um, and take a look at how we can reallocate funds to actual community services that actually address crime, um, and can help reduce the amount of policing that we need in our neighborhoods. Um, that's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, caller. Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Can you lower the volume on your device, please? Thank you. Please, please state your name.
Hi, my name is Abigail, and I live in Kent County, um, in Alto, Michigan, and I work in Grand Rapids. Um, as a social worker, with a focus in community organizing, um, I felt my career doing work in organizing in predominantly black and brown neighborhoods. Um, and I tell you this because I've done years of understanding my racial identity, positioning in society, and the privilege I hold as a white woman. This message is specifically for City Commissioners O'Connor, LaParr Jones, Usasi, Lanier Moody, Mayor Bliss, and City Manager Mark Washington. As a county, as a country founded on revolution and what we would call rioting, the people who talk about, um, Black Lives Matter and the protests going on, it's laughable to think about how we were founded and continue to implement these things. It's revolutionary, and we have a, we have this positioning to be in a time to change systems that have been wrought with systemic injustices for hundreds of years. As someone who lives in Alto, Michigan, I'll tell you that the police presence here is sparing, and do you know why? It's because people who have good jobs and access to education and benefit from lack of implementation of laws don't need the police presence. Look at marijuana and policing based on race and their location, and it says enough. It's disheartening when we're not talking about the issues that, and the identities, and the ways that people whose lives are being impacted by police in black and brown communities, and the racial targeting, and the illegal arrests, and misuse of police force, and how that is impacting. Not the, not the buildings that are in the cars and the property damage, but we're not talking about the lives, um, that people have. As people talk about these, um, it's our duty in our, in our country to dive deeper into understanding racism and systemic racism that exists, and how that holds up unfair systems and economic advantages for some and not for all. Commissioners, I leave with a story from my time during grad school, where in a similar discussion was held about racial, uh, radical ideas like defunding the police. Somebody said, well, what are we supposed to do then? And, and the person responded saying, it's not my sole job to come up with the solutions to the problem. It is our collective responsibility to dream of a new future. And what is hard, especially for people in this city, is that we didn't have to dream of a reality because many white individuals and people with economic privilege have continued to benefit of these systems. And so I ask commissioners, that you continue to use the privilege that you have, uh, to defund the police, for Mark Washington, for you to put up the budget for discussion now rather than in November, to listen to black and brown communities who have been exploited and overpolied, and to imagine an equitable future, and to continue to say Black Lives Matter. Thank you, and I yield my time.
Thank you, caller. Caller, you're on with the City Commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now. Your time starts now.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I live in Grand Rapids Township. I work in the city six days a week. My name is Super Baker, and I'm a proud member of Voice for the Badge. I'm calling tonight, of course, to really let people know that defunding our police is not a good idea. Statistics will show that by having less police, you will have more crime. And with such a beautiful city, every morning I drive through Preston, and I look around, and I look at the beautification, and I look at the revitalization of Bridge Street, and it would be just so sad to see what would happen to all these areas if our city isn't safe. And our city won't be safe if we lose police officers. Defunding means losing police officers. If you take the money out of the budget and you put it somewhere else, it's the officers that are going to lose. It's the city in the end that is going to lose. We're already short on officers. All you have to do is look at the number of officers that have retired in the last six months. It's frightening. It's frightening to know that our city every day becomes a little more unsafe because we're not being protected. And it also is very disturbing that our city would even consider such a move. We need to offer our officers more support. You want to change the dynamics? Then have these kids mentored. There's no better mentor than our police department. They are amazing. They have scored high tests across the board, and my support is unwavering, as well as the Voice for the Badge. And we will continue on our journey to bridge that gap between our police officers and our community, working with many of the city leaders, and hopefully you will seriously put away the idea of defunding our police officers. Thank you so much, everybody. Have a great night.
Thank you caller. Caller, you're on with the city commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Hi, my name is Dempsey Mikkola. I live in Grand Rapids, Michigan. I just wanted to say you guys need to defund the police right now. You want to end crime? Get rid of this police militarization shit. You've already seen shootings go up this year. Get rid of it. Invest more money in infrastructure, and you will see crime go down. If the people are unheard for too long, we will be very, very upset, and you will see a shitstorm like no other.
Sir, please watch your language.
I'll also pick a better slogan than "Cold City, you schmucks." It's fucking lame.
Watch your language, sir.
Just, yeah, just cut the call.
You're on with the city commission. Can you please lower the volume on your device? You have three minutes with the city commission. Your time starts now.
Hi there, my name is Robert. I am a Grand Rapids resident. I heard the Voice of the Badge, the gentleman who spoke earlier, and then the lady who just spoke, and they both, you know, the things that they're saying about police officers, about police having PTSD, and, you know, the record number of police suicides, you know, these are like, that's a big data point. These are real things, and they're happening, but I just, I think that we're not really thinking about this idea clearly about defunding the police. You know, in a perfect world, you defund the police, you take money away from the police department, and then, you know, you hope that you keep the best of the best, you know, that you don't have these bad apple officers, as people like to describe them, and then you take that money that you took away from the police department, and you put it into the community, into areas that, you know, maybe don't need a police presence, but police are sent there anyway. And then you really just, you know, in the long term, you make the job of the police easier. Yeah, I just, I really hope, if you guys are listening, I hope everybody is just kind of understanding that these are big issues. This is, this really is a time in history that I think we can think big. I think these ideas are scary in the present, but long term, you know, we really need to think about our entire community, really. And, yeah, I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you caller. Caller, you're on with the city commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Hi, my name is Helen Martin. I live in the city of Grand Rapids. So I just wanted to give my support towards the defunding the police in a way that takes money away from the police and gives it back to the community in order to help them perform better in every way. So I wanted to go over one caller previously talked about how they saw police helping a woman with a missing child. I just want to ask that person, did the police help prevent that crime? It doesn't sound like they did, because if they did, then the crime wouldn't have happened. So that's maybe one piece of evidence towards how police don't actually prevent crime. They are just there to resolve it. Now, then, why do we spend so much money on police patrolling if police don't prevent crime? It doesn't seem right. So I also wanted to go over another point that was made about how they said that they never see police officers within their neighborhood. I feel that this gives rec evidence to the fact that the police aren't patrolling all areas of the city equally, or instead focusing on certain other areas, only to the extent of which to where one person doesn't see the police in their neighborhood at all. If I were patrolling, I would want to try and go to every single neighborhood equally so that you can make sure that all of the areas that you're patrolling are being, or all the areas that you have under your, I guess, precinct are taken care of. But that doesn't seem to be the case. So me personally, I've been personally affected by crime cities. My car was broken into, and my items rifled through. Some stolen. I didn't call the police. I knew that they would be unable to do anything about it. Instead, what would happen would be possibly my things seen in a pawn shop, and then I looked through them or whatever. They weren't even really any good items, but I'm not going to call the police for that.
That's three minutes caller. That's three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Caller, you're on with the city commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Hi, I'm Phiael Anichak. I live in the Second Ward of Grand Rapids. I'm just calling in support of defunding the police. I recently made a TikTok, I know it's funny, but it got about nineteen thousand views, and it's pushing six thousand likes. Majority of the comments were from people in Michigan and/or Grand Rapids. The people not in Grand Rapids were from Detroit or surrounding areas, saying they see Grand Rapids as a severely racist and scary place for people of other races. And also, knowing the fact that the GRPD is under investigation by the ACLU in the state of Michigan, I am fully supporting the thirty-two, or the seven percent cut from thirty-nine percent to thirty-two percent of the budget. And I believe Mark Washington needs to open discussion about budget negotiations earlier than November. Thank you. I yield my time.
Thank you caller. Caller, you're on with the city commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Thank you. My name's Fred. I live on the west side of Grand Rapids.
Go ahead caller.
Yeah, I got a couple questions. Probably all heard them before. I just don't get to defunding at all. Zero. I mean, why are we doing this? I think, in this case, I think we're starting to foul everybody else. This is what's happening in this town. I think that just somebody else is doing it, a different state's doing it, we're going to do it. Whitman's doing the same thing. You get officers who are proud of their jobs, great guys, they're going to change jobs, take early retirements. We have zero protection in the city of Grand Rapids, and the city of Grand Rapids is starting to get tough. We all know that, too. Let's not ignore what's going on in Grand Rapids right now. This city needs protection, like great officers like they are today. Well, Mayor Bliss, I would appreciate if you would just step it up. We've got the money. Let's get the cops. These guys are hardworking human beings. Nobody up there would like to have their job today, and that's a guarantee, including me. It's a scary job. So let's quit following everybody. Let's do our thing. Let's be different. Have a good night.
Thank you caller. Caller, you're on with the city commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Hi, my name is Cherie, and I live in Grand Rapids, Michigan. I'm calling to support defunding the police department. When we're working as a team, or in our case, a community, it's common to delegate tasks based on expertise. From my personal experience as a sexual assault survivor and a family member of a mentally ill individual, I believe the police are not equipped to handle every emergency situation, nor they should be expected to. I think why not reallocate funds to services that are better equipped to prevent crime due to addiction, mental health issues, lack of sexual education, et cetera. I really believe our community would be better if we embrace the knowledge of the whole, rather than relying on our police department to solve every issue. I appreciate your time. I appreciate the conversation. I yield my time.
Thank you caller. Caller, can you please lower the volume on your device?
Yes.
Yes.
Hello.
Yes, hello. You have three minutes. Please state your name and the city in which you live. Your time starts now. Go ahead caller.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Hey, Tony, here he is.
Caller, go ahead.
Hello.
Yes, go ahead. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
My name is Tony Hogan, my man.
Go ahead.
My name is Tony Hogan, and I believe in the police officers, okay? I really do believe in the police officers, because if it wasn't for the police officers, what would we do today? You know what I'm saying? So, hey, I just want to let y'all know, I believe in the police officers, and I just like, everything that's happened right now, wasn't for the police officers, even with their parents, they couldn't do nothing, a lot of them, but, hey, they were there. You know what I'm saying? And it made a difference. And the police officers do make a difference. And if Black Lives Matter, let them stop killing one another, okay? They got to stop killing one another to make a difference. That's all I got to say right now, because I'm so pissed about this, you know?
Thank you caller. Caller, you're on with the city commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Hi, my name is Jeff, and I live in Grand Rapids. The reason I'm calling is in regards to the issue of defunding the police. My main concern for calling is I have two young daughters, and I'm wondering how this may affect the response time with nine-one-one calls. Say, you know, someone were, they were choked. We've already had some issues with my daughters, where we've had to call the paramedics, the EMTs, the police, and whatever, and I'm just wondering how this is going to affect them. Say they were choked on something, and I call, and the paramedics are tied up, and EMTs are tied up, and the fire department, and now the police, is this going to affect response times to nine-one-one?
Is that a comment? This is a comment period, not a question and answer, unfortunately.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry. Well, then I can comment. Like I said, I have two young daughters. One is nine months old, the other is three. We've already had in the past issues where we've had to call on first responders, and they've responded in timely fashion. So I'm just calling the concern to, if you're defunding the police, is this going to, is this going to take, say, the first responders are tied up, and maybe a police officer could respond to this, where he knows how to take care of the situation, and I don't? So now is there going to be a lag time in response? And then something happens to my daughter, God forbid? And, you know, that's my main concern. That's my main issue. And to be honest, the fact that I'm calling to even address the situation of defunding the police is ridiculous, to be honest, in my opinion. I can't believe that I'm even calling to say defund the police. But, so that's why I'm calling. That's my comment. That's my main concern. My children, nine-one-one time, the response call, the response time for calls in of that sort. So, thank you.
Thank you caller. Caller, you're on with the city commission. Please state your name and the city in which you live. You have three minutes. Your time starts now.
Thanks so much for taking comments. My name is Tom Bradley, in the west side. I am calling to express my desire to not see our department, police departments, defunded for a few very specific reasons. One is that we have these folks there, the Grand Rapids Police Department, for difficult and challenging circumstances where we need them to come right away. And if we lose officers and lose funding, the response times will definitely go up. It'll take longer to get somebody to a certain difficult situation. It'll take longer to get an emergency response. Our officers will be spread out. Probably one of the big things that will also be cut, secondly, is our community police officers. We can have them, we have the luxury of having them because they can take the time to personally attend to our neighborhoods and make friends, and do positive public relations work and make a difference. Those positions will probably be cut, and we'll lose our community police officers, which will hurt our neighborhoods. I think that it's going to be difficult for people who are not trained police officers to do mental illness calls and things like that, because in a second, by their nature, these types of calls can, in a second, get violent and dangerous. And the first person that's not a police officer going to a call like this that gets seriously hurt, or somebody else is seriously hurt, will call into question the whole plan. We have a lot of challenges in front of us. I just very much appreciate the hard work of our city, and our mayor, and all, and our police chief, and a lot of their law enforcement officers. I would like to come up with solutions that involve probably greater funding, so that we can maybe add personnel that might help with some of these significant issues. I think the solution to our problem is not defunding, but more funding, and diverse funding, so we can add more community people and more community help, broaden our base, and encourage our community with safer and law enforcement training for all of our officers and all of our community. So thanks for my time, and thanks for taking the time to listen to our community.
Thank you caller. Caller, can you please lower the volume on your device? Yes, that's okay. You have three minutes. Please state your name and the city in which you live. Your time starts now. Go ahead.
Gino Newville, Grand Rapids, Michigan.
Gino Newville, Grand Rapids, Michigan.
Go ahead caller.
Yeah, so we're talking about the police department. Why wouldn't anybody want to uh start supporting law enforcement or cut things down? We need more, more. I run a huge ministry in Grand Rapids. I got right now during COVID-19 and uh you know, I've got 400 plus kids in our gym, but we're still supported by the police department. We're still taking care of our community, doing what we're supposed to do, sticking together. We need to support the law enforcement 100%. 100%. Correct?
This is just a comment period. There's no question and the answer is unfortunate.
Yes, we, we need, we need support the law enforcement 100%. I'm alive today for something that took place 35 years ago because of a police officer. You know what? I have love, I have courage, I support, you know what? We need it, you know? And I tell you, our big problem that we have, and I don't want to offend nobody, the big problem we have is Democrat in Washington. I think, I forgot her name. Yeah, um you know who I'm talking about. But yeah, once you fix this problem, Biden, we're gonna be okay. We need to support the law enforcement everywhere. Sir, God bless you. Thank you very much and uh yes. God be with you.
Thank you caller. Mayor Bliss, there are no more callers in the queue.
Thank you Danny. All right, Commissioners, I will um turn to all of you. I think tonight I will start with Commissioner Moody.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I appreciate all the call-ins. Appreciate everything that we've gone through today with every committee meeting that we've had, the work that's being done in our community. Uh I want to applaud Chief Payne for the work that he's doing. Our city police department is doing everything within their power to make some changes. I appreciate Reverend Jones's work uh reimagining the police department. I think we're on the verge of doing that. So I think the citizens just uh continue to uh voice their opinion, but at the same time, we have procedures that we have to follow as city commissioners. Once again, I thank everything that my colleagues have said today and that we'll say later on. So I pray that everyone have a good night and thanks again for calling.
You're muted, you're muted here.
About that, Commissioner Esasi?
Thank you Mayor. Um thank you for those who called in and for city staff. You know, I think um even the calls today, I think, express the continued conversations that people are having in their neighborhoods with groups of people. Um you know, a continuation of, I think, the, the tale of two cities that Grand Rapids is and the different experiences that people have. Last summer when I was campaigning, I received a call that, that nobody wants to get, that somebody very close to me, who at one point lived with me, had um been shot. Not fatally, but was hospitalized at Butterworth and was recovering from a gunshot wound. And that is what I think about when I do this work. When I think about what really helps communities be safe, where we need to make investments, I think about the 19 or 20 or the, oh, sorry, I don't know the number. Can't remember off the top of my head, but in 2019, all those that died um because of gun violence, and I think all but one were black. And so I think that the comments today by Chief Payne really highlighted the issue of systemic racism in our entire public safety system. This is tied to our public health. It's certainly tied to investments that we don't have direct control over. But I will continue to um, you know, look forward to these conversations, to listen to the feedback that we receive in this draft plan um that we received from our chief today. I think that's important to note. Uh a lot of people have called and said, uh you know, we need you to support right now. And I think part of what I think my role is, is to uh evaluate though that feedback, to ask questions. I had a chance to talk to the chief after the meeting today and um you know, was pleased by his, by his responses. So I think I, I just want to highlight, and some of the callers did, who are the victims of violence that exists in our city and remembering those individuals and family members who were not as lucky as my family to not have to bury their own individual in their life because of gun violence. Thank you.
Thank you Commissioner. Uh Commissioner Lanier?
Thanks Mayor and thanks to all who provided public comments this evening. Um I think um during the public hearing for the Amplify Project, it was another um highlight for this evening. As we were hearing from a variety of community members um and organizations who have sat at the table with Amplify to um get us to a place where we are moving forward with that project. Um I'd also like to um again say thank you to the chief and his team for the presentation this morning. Um as I mentioned, I think Commissioner Esasi uh mentioned this morning um that words matter, and I think the words that Commissioner, I'm sorry, that Chief Payne used as he was presenting were um impactful and powerful words that I think are the start of healing in our community, where we talk about systemic racism, where we talk about the historic nature of policing in America, and where we talk about where locally in our department or in our city, where we see disparities um in arrest rates and, and some of the actions that have occurred in some of our neighborhoods. We cannot, I think your point Commissioner Esasi regarding the tale of two cities is well taken, and we cannot continue to have a Grand Rapids that is amazing um and um hitting national um lists positively and yet um having national lists that um indicate that life isn't so well for black citizens specifically in our city. And so um I'm thankful that the chief spoke to um to the issues and even apologized for where we've been, some of the actions that have taken place um with our department and in, in our city in the past um in order to move forward. Um I think that there were a lot of good nuggets that were outlined within the strategic plan um as we talked about earlier. I know that I have, you know, some follow-up questions about the budget implications of some of the items um and making sure that surveillance is the policy, the surveillance policy is followed as we're looking at some of those tools. And more importantly, to make sure that we have um specific conversations about the young people who um are victims of violence, as you just talked about, Commissioner Esasi, and, and those who are perpetrators of violence. And what we're learning is that those who may be um perpetrating violence in the community are um using guns and buying illegal guns and carrying them out of fear. And there are a lot of families, parents who are, and grandparents trying to figure out how to keep their children safe, and it's a real problem here. And so um as we are looking at policing and as we're looking at public safety and as we're looking at ways to make sure that um our citizens are safe, that we look at creative ways to make sure that we have opportunities for um young people to not choose um some of the decisions that they're choosing, which results in um, in life being taken um far too early, and then those who are um harmed because of, of gun violence. So um I think we are headed in, in a good direction um with this strategic plan and looking forward to kind of the next steps. Um and, and I'll just say over and over, you know, clearly we know that making sure that the, I think the budget is the component that the public is ready to hear about. And um I know that they have asked for um the city manager to, to look at um starting those conversations sooner than later, and I support that, and I don't know what that looks like. But I'm afraid that if we don't, um this will continue to play out during these meetings because people aren't feeling like they're being heard. So um if there's any way, and I don't know what, what items need to be in place, what needs to be aligned in order for us to start having um the conversations about how the budget can be impacted by the items that are within this um strategic plan, but I'm certainly ready to have those discussions. Thank you.
Thanks Commissioner. Uh Commissioner O'Keehan?
Yeah, thank you Mayor. Uh and I, I do appreciate the uh, the uh presentation this morning of the, the police department strategic plan. And uh, and I feel like this is a much better place to start uh in terms of uh being able to, to, to have uh some, some out, some goals for outcomes and some strategies to try to address those outcomes. And uh, and I don't think uh wherever we land, it's not gonna make everybody happy, but sometimes I think that's how you know you did it right, is when, you know, not everyone's happy at the end, but you, you made progress towards something that has uh has some positive outcomes. And so uh, now I just encourage all of us to, to stay engaged in the process and uh to understand that this is a process, this is a big organization and, you know, you know, we shouldn't, we don't, we shouldn't and, and make million dollar decisions, multi-million dollar decisions uh, you know, uh in hours of discussion and debate, that it takes some time to do these things right. And so just, you know, this is a process and let's, you know, be committed to the process of figuring out how we get to the best outcomes without making rash decisions.
Thanks Commissioner. Uh Commissioner Jones?
Thank you Mayor. I want to uh begin by giving a special shout out to Daniel in the clerk's office. I think Daniel uh is a, is an incredible maestro who does just a phenomenal job um ever since we've been gathering online on Tuesdays uh in terms of helping to facilitate the calls that come in, and I just want to recognize uh his work um as we gather on our Tuesdays. Also want to recognize uh City Manager Washington and staff as they continue to um get the work done in the midst of a pandemic and uh coupled with the civil unrest that we've seen throughout our country and of course in our beloved city. And also want to recognize Chief Payne for his leadership and his vision that he displayed on this morning with the uh with the introduction of his uh presentation of his plan and his desired uh, desired future state uh for uh for the Grand Rapids Police Department. I want to thank everyone who called in. Uh just continue to encourage folks to, to do that and uh recognize the importance of, of communication, the importance of uh having your voice heard. So thank you very much Mayor.
Thank you Commissioner. Uh Commissioner or uh city attorney? Anything to add tonight?
No Mayor, thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you. City Clerk?
Yeah, just briefly, just a um, a brief update on last Tuesday's election. First of all, thank you to all, anybody who came out to work the polls um on Tuesday that, that, we had even a, a married couple that were watching The Daily Show with Trevor Noah and said, he said, "We need workers," and they signed up and they did a great job. So thank you to all those that came to us in unconventional ways and those who, um those organizations, community groups that got their members and their supporters to come out and help for those um that just feel like they could work at the same time. So thank you to them. So Election Day um 2016 in August was 11% turnout in the city of Grand Rapids. This year it was um 26%, so 15 points higher. Um but it also is, it's a huge number in raw numbers as well, because we've gone from 131,000 registered voters four years ago to 142,000 registered voters. So we know the census numbers are gonna be up for the city of Grand Rapids, but that also means we have uh more raw voters as well. So um overall, it was a good day, but um we had a very high um absences, as you heard, you know, all throughout the media. We tabulated 26,000 absentee ballots. But we still had 12,000 voters go to the, go to a precinct as well, which was almost as many voters as we had total in August 2016. So our staff um we turned around and we are in November mode, even though the Kent County Canvas is still going. We're already in November mode getting ready for um well, every election is the biggest election of our lifetime, so getting ready for this election as well. So thank you to all those who assisted us, all the other city departments. Um Election Day is a um citywide effort.
Thank you City Clerk. City Manager?
Thank you Mayor. Uh real briefly, I, I want to thank all of the staff uh that has prepared for, helped us to prepare for this meeting, these important conversations. Appreciate the work. I want to congratulate um Wayne Germburg uh for being appointed to the position of Water Systems Manager and Mike Lanier for his appointment to the position of Environmental Services Manager. Happy birthday, Mr. Santi Kane. He was hanging in here today on the commission meeting night on his birthday, and I appreciate the work that he's done. Also want to thank the police department, uh Chief Payne for his leadership and with Deputy Chiefs today in the presentation and their prime job along with uh many members of the team that helped to prepare to include members of the police department staff, uh fire department, executive office, uh the advisory council members, um the performance management office, our customer service innovation office, and um of course the community members who've provided uh feedback and perspective uh that will help us to improve the department. I think that's the goal, is improvement and better policing outcomes. And there are many ways to get there. Uh hopefully we will, we will provide a path forward that, that this community can be proud of. Also want to um just remind the community today about uh we emphasized in my earlier comments about housing and homelessness, uh that this is um not a sole dealing with the issues of homelessness is another very complex issue. And it's not solely uh left to the city of Grand Rapids, and there are many partners that we have in this work, and I look forward to uh continuing that discussion around uh all of the things that are needed, both for sheltering and supportive housing as well as wrap services for mental health and behavioral health services and, and job uh creation and, and just getting uh a more holistic approach. I think what we have done now is um we've responded during an emergency because it was a public health issue uh for uh the homeless population, and we appreciate the response of police department, the fire department, firefighters who have risked their health, literally. And many of our police officers and firefighters have become infected as a result of that. So I, I, I want to thank them for, for their work, but also invite the public to continue to pay attention to the plan uh that was uh put forth uh during the community development meeting this morning and the public hearing that we're gonna have talk about the past performance and the future needs of housing, our CDBG program, as we talk about the ESG funding. Those, those uh funding uh sources are annually appropriated um by the City Commission, particularly for housing, but there's other funding uh that's appropriated in this community from the county as well as private philanthropy and um and so I am um very interested in looking at this more holistically uh moving forward. I also want to um reflect on some of the, at least uh the comments or the letters that came earlier from uh the African-American Task Force. And um the governor recently did announce uh the issues on um declaring racism as a public health issue as well as the development of African-American Leadership Council, the Black Leadership Council. While we don't have a health department uh to authoritatively make that declaration as a public health crisis, um I do think that we have the same ability to uh try to get a um ongoing dialogue, not crisis dialogue, not problem-focused dialogue, uh but an ongoing dialogue when it becomes the norm uh for African-American leaders to be part of a leadership council um and to talk about issues locally in this community. So the governor's task force is to be commended, uh but that is a statewide task force, and I am looking forward to having a similar uh type of um uh group that will uh apart from dealing with uh just issues on public safety, but be able to um give perspective or advice um and counsel on larger issues uh similar to what the governor has uh, has, has put forward. So um I appreciate the, her leadership and think that uh something like that can um find, you can find benefit in something like that locally. Thank you Mayor.
Thank you City Manager. Uh so I'll end with just a, a couple things. Uh first, I want to thank our city clerk and the city clerk's office and all of our election workers who helped make sure that our primary election last week was a success. Uh I was corresponding with our city clerk late into the night, and I know that it was a, he was still here in the early morning hours because of all of the absentee ballots that were still being counted. So I just want to thank him for his uh hard work and um everyone else who helped make that possible. Now we're gearing up for the November 3rd election, and so we will take what we learned from last week and make sure that we are well-prepared for November 3rd, uh but we'll still need election workers. So if you are so inclined, uh please uh reach out to our clerk's office and spend a day and help us make sure that we have a successful November election. a day and help us make sure that we have a successful November election. Um, I'm also going to add my thanks. I know my colleagues already spoke about it and we talked about it this morning. Add my thanks to our city manager and our police chief and everyone who worked really hard on bringing forward the strategic plan today. I think it's a strong plan. I hope you take some time to review it, uh, in detail. I did go onto the website today and there is a process for you to review it and provide feedback. Uh, we're really looking for community feedback, so I hope you take some time, uh, to do that. Uh, but my hope is that as we, and as you look through the plan, you recognize that there are some real meaningful, uh, changes that are being proposed that I believe move us forward, uh, as we look to address systemic change in the long term. Uh, we know that it's not going to happen overnight. It's going to take time, just as everything does, uh, but creating meaningful change takes all of us, uh, and so we need to make sure that we keep everyone at the table as we work through this to the betterment of our community. Uh, and then last, uh, I have received a number of calls today about our meeting earlier where the city commission approved putting two charter amendments, uh, on the November ballot. Those were two charter amendments that were petition-driven. Uh, and so the city commission, out of respect for the process and people's ability to, um, get petition signatures to put something on our local ballot, uh, to amend our charter, we supported that. Uh, but I want to be very clear that just because we supported putting it on the ballot does not necessarily mean that every single one of us around this table, um, are going to vote yes on those two change, recommended changes. Uh, I, I know this morning, a number of my colleagues shared their concerns about potential unintended consequences. I share those concerns, uh, and I'll make sure that I, um, voice those concerns over the next several weeks as people try to understand what they're going to be able to vote on in November. Uh, and then one final thing commissioners, we brought this up and, uh, because of COVID, it kind of got put on the back burner. So as was mentioned this morning, there was a task force looking at a number of issues related to charter amendments. Uh, the intent was to have that conversation continue with the legislative team, recognizing that there may be other charter amendments that we want to bring forward as a city commission. Uh, and then unfortunately that got, uh, as I said, a little bit, uh, put on the side because of other more urgent issues. I intend to bring that back up at our legislative team where the legislative team will review the other recommendations along with other, uh, potential city commission-led charter amendments. Uh, and as we do that, we'll bring those forward and we as a full body can talk about those and potentially put on, or make the recommendation to put additional charter amendments on the ballot in the future. Uh, so with that, I will adjourn this meeting. Um, thank you all for your hard work today. A lot of good work was done, uh, and I hope everyone has a restful and safe night. Thanks.